Welcome to the City Commission Evening Meeting this November 7, 2023. Thank you all for being here tonight. I see our fellow Commissioners will still be rolling in. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome. I'd just like you to know that we begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we have various announcements, and of course, we have presentations. The presentations are an opportunity for our community and the Commission to recognize certain individuals, or organizations, or events that are important to the community overall. So if I could please ask you all to rise and join Ryan Bellamy from Virginia Schuman Young Elementary School, who is going to lead us off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible where liberty is just for all.
Thank you, Ryan. What grade is Ryan in? She's in kindergarten. So for all those in the audience who knew the Pledge of Allegiance at kindergarten, please raise your hand. Nobody, yeah. Now, Ryan, oh wait, Ryan, I have something for you. So at this time, I'd like you to please join the Commission in having a moment of silence. During this moment, I'd like you to share your prayers with us in recognizing the fact that a very important gentleman recently passed away, Mr. Carl Williams, who was the, excuse me, sorry, Mr. James, James Williams, sorry.
Oh my God.
Sorry.
That's our, that's our brand new Director of Parks and Rec that he just said passed away, so. Now, Carl, he's alive, he's alive. Stand up, Carl, he's alive. He's alive. He's alive. That's alive. I was gonna say, that's the shortest tenure anyone's ever had, the Director of Parks and Rec.
Reports of his death have been highly exaggerated.
Unbelievable.
Okay, are you finished?
Yes, we're finished.
Okay. Mr. James Williams, who, a dear friend and President of the Rock Island Civic Association, and also Dr. Brenda Snipes, who also passed away, she was our supervisor of election for, I think, ten years, I believe. And so please take this moment of silence. So I'd like to take this moment also and congratulate the new, some new folks who have gotten promotions in our city, and a new addition to our community on our dais. First of all, I'd like to congratulate our new Police Chief, Mr. now Chief Bill Schultz. Mr. Schultz has been with our department for twenty-seven years?
Twenty-three.
Long time.
Twenty-three.
And thank you so much for accepting the role, and we know you'll continue to keep us safe. And also, Mr. Carl Williams, who is now the new Director of Parks and Recreation. And also, I'd like to acknowledge and welcome Mr. Thomas Ansborough, who's new, our new City Attorney. So with that, please, if the Clerk can please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Present.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Here.
So we have full attendance, we have a couple of agenda announcements. We are removing from the agenda September 19, 2023, the conference meeting minutes for revisions. The two other sets of minutes remain on the agenda for approval. We have changes, we have a walk-on tonight, a motion approving the recommendation from the Citizens Committee of Recognition honoring former Mayor Robert Dressler as the 2022 Honored Founder. Thank you for having your emergency meeting this week, we really appreciate it, and Rob Dressler has just been an amazing mayor, and we thank him for his service during the years that he served our, our community. So with that having been said, would someone like to move for the approval of the minutes and the, and the agenda as amended?
So, second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tullis?
Yes, so the minutes and the agenda as amended have now been approved. Is school board member Dr. Jeff Holness yet here in the audience? I understand he was gonna be a little late, he's gonna be part of the presentations and recognition tonight, so we'll just wait for him to, to come. So now that leaves our next presentation, in which I would like to invite the Director General Charles Cho of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office here in Miami to please come to the podium with me to accept this proclamation. Is he, is he here yet?
He may be running late.
He's also running late.
No, he's here.
Oh, there he is, ah, there you are. Okay. So it is indeed an honor and a pleasure to invite our guests here tonight on behalf of the Taipei Economic Mission. This proclamation presented in recognition of the Hundred and Twelfth National Day of the Republic of China Taiwan. In fact, can you, I'm just standing over here, I feel like my back is to you, I'm sorry. You can take better pictures this way, too, so. Whereas the Republic of China Taiwan observes the Hundred and Twelfth National Day on October 10, 2023, and since the establishment of the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami in 1988, and the subsequent establishment of the sister state relations between the state of Florida and Taiwan in 1992, the Taipei Economic and Cultural Office in Miami has tirelessly worked to support bilateral economic, educational, and cultural relations. The United States and Taiwan have maintained and enhanced a close friendship over the decades encompassing commercial, cultural, and other interactions based on the 1979 Taiwan Relations Act, the cornerstone of the United States-Republic of China ties, which celebrates its 44th year of enactment in 2023. Taiwan is the ninth-largest trading partner of the United States and the thirteen-largest trading, excuse me, export market in the world of goods, as well as Florida's seventh-largest market in Asia, garnering the Sunshine State an estimated $1.3 billion in 2022. On August 7 of this year, President Joseph Biden signed the United States-Taiwan Initiative on the 21st Century Trade First Agreement Implementation Act into law. This paves the way for ongoing discussions between the United States and Taiwan on economic and trade matters. These talks will be facilitated through trade and investment framework agreements, technology, trade and investment collaboration frameworks, and economic prosperity partnership dialogues. These collaborative efforts aim to strengthen the bilateral partnership and promote a resilient, equitable, and prosperous 21st century economy. Taiwan's valuable involvement in international organizations include the International Civil Aviation Organization, World Health Organization, the United Nations Framework Convention on Climate Change, and the International Criminal Police Organization benefiting the regional development of peace and prosperity. In particular, the city of Fort Lauderdale supports Taiwan's aspirations to further contribute to international development and to promote peace and prosperity, and it to international development and to promote peace and prosperity, and it cherishes its sister-city relationship with Kaohsiung. Finally, the city of Fort Lauderdale recognizes Taiwan's efforts to meaningfully participate in global affairs and will continue to support its mission of economic liberalization, political democratization, and significant participation in the international arena. Now therefore, we as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale do hereby proclaim October 10, 2023 as the Republic of China Day, Taiwan, in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and encourage everyone to join us in congratulating the republic on this milestone and recognize its achievements with our admiration and our appreciation. Signed by myself, Mayor Dean Trentalas, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words first? Oh, yeah, sure. Yes. I'll hold this, I'll hold this. Thank you so much, yeah. Honorable Mayor Trentalas, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I'm so, so happy to come to attending today's event. On behalf of my government and the people, I would like to extend our sincerely appreciation to the city of Fort Lauderdale for your longtime support and enduring friendship to Republic of China, Taiwan. This proclamation I just received, the mayor, actually means a lot for us. On one hand, it expresses the congratulations to our national day. This year is the 112th National Day, our 112th birthday to our countries. On the other hand, it also shows the strong bond between the city of Fort Lauderdale and the city of Kaohsiung. Actually, Kaohsiung is my hometown, and I also regard Fort Lauderdale as my second home. Why? Even my office stationed in Miami, but almost every weekend, I come out to Fort Lauderdale and all Hollywood area because we have a big Taiwanese community in this area.
It's time to move the office up here.
Yeah. And this year, it happened to be the 15th anniversary, just like the mayor has mentioned. It's for sister-city relationship between the city of Fort Lauderdale and city of Kaohsiung. My office, Taipei Economic and Cultural Office, the main job is trying to facilitate the cooperation between these two beautiful cities. I sincerely hope the mayor and the commissioners and all our good friends, they are to work together to promote, to enhance the cooperation between these two cities. And thank you so much for having me tonight. I also would like to express, I hope that you have a wonderful and pleasant evening. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you, mayor. Yeah. Thank you, thank you, mayor. Thank you. Yes. And actually, we know 2024 is coming, so I also prepared a small, we call it Appointment Diary, or Agenda, for 2024. This is just a small book, but he also showed the beauty of Taiwan. So we sincerely hope in the coming year, we have more and more friends from Fort Lauderdale to visit Taiwan, to also can enjoy the beauty of my country. So in this agenda, there's a lot of beautiful scenery about Taiwan, just as beautiful like Fort Lauderdale. Yeah. Thank you, thank you, mayor. Thank you for everything.
Absolutely. Beautiful book.
Yes, thank you. And thank you all commissioners, thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite our vice mayor Pamela Beasley Pittman to present a proclamation regarding Homelessness Awareness Month. And who will be up there to accept this? City staff recognizing our community partners. Watch your step.
Hi, everybody. Come on, I'm very chipper. Hi. There we go. I have this great privilege tonight to present this presentation. First, I would like to invite our esteemed community partners to please stand, and then I'm gonna ask that you face the audience, okay? This way, face the audience. First, you want me, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm not following instructions.
You better not leave after this, you're gonna lose our whole audience.
If you would face me first, okay? And Jania?
Yeah, stand over here, stand. Stand on this side for me right here. Yes. Same one here?
Yeah, right there, it's good. Okay. I'm gonna ask you to hold that while I read this. Okay. I invited our community partners to stand because we want to recognize their invaluable contributions that each of you bring to share the vision of the world where no one faces the hardship of hunger and homelessness. And Jania, she's already here, so she's standing with me. The proclamation in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, November 2023. Whereas the National Coalition of Homelessness and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness dedicates November as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month. Whereas the objective of the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month are in alignment with the National Strategic Initiative aimed to eradicate homelessness. Furthermore, it is actively, it actively supports the efforts of local associations that provide aid to individuals confronting issues of hunger. And whereas the city is tackling homelessness through a comprehensive approach, collaborating with organizations such as Task Force Ending Homelessness, Broward Partnership for the Homeless, the Salvation Army, the Broward County Continuum of Care, Henderson Behavioral Health, Broward Addiction and Recovery Center, Sun Service, Herb Hope South Florida, and a number of other essential partners. And whereas this collaborative effort involves partnership with diverse community stakeholders, including the 17th Judicial Circuit Court, Broward Health Point, and our neighboring cities Hollywood and Pompano Beach, and as well as a number of homeowners and civic associations within our city. And whereas together, they confront the root cause of homelessness and provide critical support to those in need. This unified action serves as a powerful statement to the community determination, pooling resources, and expertise to tackle critical issues surrounding homelessness and hunger with compassion. And whereas Fort Lauderdale Police Homeless Outreach Team and the Fort Lauderdale Fire Rescue's Mobile Integrative Healthcare Unit, and the Community Court, and the Housing Navigation Programs are resources supported by the city, resorting in over 1,200 visits to Community Court in the last fiscal year, making a notable success. And whereas since October 1, 2022, the Housing Navigation Program administered by the city successfully achieved a 65% housing success rate of identifying a cohort of 43 chronically homeless individuals, and the Fort Lauderdale Police Homeless Outreach Team facilitated and reunited, re, I'm sorry, reunification of 59 homeless individuals with their families and provided outreach approximately 2,800 times. That's amazing. Let's give them a hand. And whereas, and whereas this month and throughout the year, the city of Fort Lauderdale urges our community members to acknowledge the many individuals affected by homelessness and to support our local partners and agencies and organizations. Now therefore, we the City Commission of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do proclaim November 23 as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month in the city of Fort Lauderdale, dated this the 7th day of November, 2023, signed by our mayor Dean Trentalas. And now we're gonna have Jania, she can come and share a word with us.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jania Robinson, Assistant Neighbor Support Manager. I have a few words, and I would like to acknowledge everyone. We are pleased to have many of our partners and service providers with us this evening that helped the city move forward with our homeless initiatives. I'd like to ask our Police Homeless Outreach Team and the Fire Department's Mobile Integrated Healthcare Program to please stand and wave to be acknowledged. Both, both of these groups are our boots on the ground that help us identify and connect with our homeless neighbors. And a special thanks to Judge Florence Barner, who could not be here this evening, for her dedication to Community Court. In addition to the FTL team, I'd like to recognize and thank these outstanding organizations standing before you. Please wave as I call your organization. Joining us from our neighboring municipalities are Broward County, city of Pompano, and the city of Hollywood. Okay? Next are our community partners who tirelessly continue to work to provide the needed support to those individuals and families experiencing hunger and homelessness. Task Force for Ending Homelessness, Hope South Florida, Broward Partnership, the Salvation Army, Henderson Behavioral Health, Sun Serve, Amethyst Agency of Broward, Broward Addiction Recovery Center, Fort Lauderdale Behavioral Center, Florida Department of Children and Families, Broward Health Point, Care Resource, Women in Distress, Broward House, Project SOAR, Broward Healthy Start Coalition, Fellowship Living, United Way Mission United, Broward Behavioral Health Coalition, Evolution Treatment Center, the Backpack Barber Foundation, Showering Together, we are all working to address homelessness within our communities while continuing to identify ways we can collaborate for a greater impact. Lastly, our homeowners and civic association groups and community groups have engaged and helped us support our different programs, including providing meals for Community Court, House of God Fort Lauderdale Church, South Middle River Civic Association, Sunrise Intercoastal Homeowners Association, Paula's Kitchen Mission, Central Beach Alliance, Lakewood Civic Association, Idyllwild Improvement Association, Middle River Terrace Neighborhood Association, Harbordale Civic Association, Progresso Village Civic Association. Can we all give them a great hand for their continued work? Thank you. Can you all please turn around for a picture? Okay, from the stairs? Okay. I'm gonna take a picture, everybody face the front. I'll try to do it this way. And then to the back after I take this one to Ashley. Okay.
Can I invite you all up on stage so she can take a picture from the audience?
I don't have it, you can get it from right here. Yeah. You guys can turn around and face this way.
I was backstage, I thought I was getting ready to do a proclamation.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor, and folks in the community, all the stakeholders, thank you for your service to our community. And now I'd like to invite Commissioner Stephen Glassman to present a proclamation regarding the, this is the 8th Annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway Day.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor. I'd like to call up for this incredible proclamation, Mr. Michael Albeda, president of Lakewood Civic Association, and the force behind what I'm going to talk about now. And when I'm finished, I'll introduce him, and then he'll also introduce all of his partners that are here today. But maybe if everyone could come up at the same time, so we have everybody up here and ready to go, that'd be great. Thank you. This is a proclamation from the office of the mayor, city of Fort Lauderdale, in recognition of the 8th Annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway. Whereas, on Thanksgiving Day, Americans unite to honor the cherished traditions of gratitude for family, community, and country. And whereas, this holiday reminds us to embrace the values of compassion and mutual responsibility to all humanity. As we gather around the tables surrounded by loved ones in humble gratitude for the bounties we have received, and whereas, ensure a meaningful Thanksgiving for those who might go without the traditional holiday meal. The Wayne Barton Study Center, joining hands with the Fort Lauderdale Police and Fire Rescue Departments, Broward County Property Appraiser Marty Care, and his Mobile Exemption Education Team, Pastor Dwayne Black and the Sanctuary Church, St. Anthony's Homeless Ministries, the James Club, along with a multitude of volunteers, will gather at the Sanctuary Church to distribute groceries and turkeys to neighbors in need. And whereas, the annual Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway exemplifies the essence of generosity and compassion, and allows us to share our time and resources throughout our community with the less fortunate, whether it be in the form of sharing a hearty meal, extending a helping hand, or providing words of encouragement. And whereas, the mayor and city commissioners express deep appreciation as they issue this proclamation commemorating the 8th anniversary of the Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway, we extend our sincere thanks to our community partners whose contributions are instrumental to its success, and special recognition to civic activist Michael Albeda for his outstanding coordination of this significant event. Now therefore, we, as city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 18, 2023, as the Unity in the Community Grocery and Turkey Giveaway Day in the city of Fort Lauderdale, and dated this, the 7th day of November, 2023, and signed by our mayor, the Honorable Dean J. Trentalas.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and City Commissioner, it's a great honor, once again, to receive this proclamation. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't seen this grocery turkey giveaway, it's an unbelievable thing. It's a miracle that it actually happens right at Sanctuary Church on 1400 North Federal Highway. It's right near those two dealerships, Greco Ford and Greco Chevrolet. Anyway, when Dean was the Commissioner at that time, they asked me, I was just a regular pedestrian and a member of St. Anthony's Homeless Ministry, they said, "How many people do you expect here?" And I said, "Ah, give or take maybe 300, 400." Speed up the story, there was 5,000 people that showed up that day. That's the true honest, God is my witness. And the fact of the matter is, we emptied out two tractor trailers' worth of food and everybody went home with something. Now we're up to four tractor trailers and it's just an unbelievable thing. There is the Junior League of Greater Fort Lauderdale is going to be involved this year. Also is Food Rescue, which gathers meals from Trader Joe's, packaged meals, and volunteers that are coming in this year. AHF is involved, St. Anthony's Homeless Ministry. The James Club Foundation right here is Michael Jalabaska, he's the General Manager. They're 45 volunteers strong. And I'll tell you something, to my dear friends of the City of Fort Lauderdale, the agencies, Fort Lauderdale's bravest is the Fire Department, and also Fort Lauderdale's finest is the Police Department, I want to thank them very much, all the city agencies' neighborhood support. The love continues on and it's just an unbelievable thing to see. It's good to be kind, it's good to be, share your time, especially this time. You give it up, give it up, come on. That's right. There are various flyers throughout, if you want information, please, if you know someone in need, post this on site. It's good to be, you know, where they say, "The exalted will be humble and the humble will be exalted." So, we're hearing amen?
Yeah.
Okay. That's right. So, the fact of the matter is, is that I'm indebted to Commissioner Glassman. He believes in sharing the stream. I'm indebted to Dean Trentalas. He's been out there during COVID times. Yes, COVID times. And I am indebted to the entire City Commission. My love to all you all. City Manager, thank you so much for your great support of the city agencies, and it's a great thing to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You can pass them out.
Here, take them all. Here you go, man. Ben Sarnson? Where is it? Okay, Ben. Ben Sarnson. Thank you. I, you're outside, there are any more flyers? This young one, stand right here.
of dozens and dozens of people to make that happen. And the sponsorship, those who donate the food as well as donate the time, we are forever grateful and indebted to those who participate in this every year. It's sad to think that so many people are eligible to take advantage of this program, but it also makes me feel good that the richness of this community is there to be so generous as to be able to share in that day. So, thank you, Michael, thank you, everybody. And we appreciate, looking forward to the 18th that we start the giveaway again.
Mayor, just a comment for everyone to also know, folks start lining up, I'd say, the day before, the night before.
That is correct. 2:30, 1:30 in the morning, the first caller lined up.
They line up, and I'll tell you, the cars go from Federal Highway, south to Sunrise, and then both east and west on Sunrise for miles. It's incredible, the lineup of people that starts at 2 o'clock in the morning, because when we get there around 8, 8:30, it's already an incredible line, and it's an incredible, incredible undertaking. Thank you, Michael, and all of the partners, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I understand that Dr. Holness is in the house. May I invite you to come up and give your presentation, an update on the Fort Lauderdale schools? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much Mayor Trentalas. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and thank you to all the Commissioners as well. I certainly appreciate being here in Fort Lauderdale. And I also wanted to thank Commissioner Beasley Pittman for meeting with me the other day as well. So it's a pleasure to be here. I am proud to be the District 5 Board Member representing schools in the City of Fort Lauderdale. Thank you for allowing me to present this evening. I would like to take a moment to acknowledge all school-based and district-based staff that are here with me, because they have been doing all of the hard work behind the scenes. So if you could please stand up so you can be recognized, all the district-based and school-based staff. And if you could give them a round of applause. So, the principles that we have, I'd like to thank our Dillard Elementary Principal, Ms. Robinson, Norfolk Elementary, Ms. Atkins Brown, Rock Island Elementary, Ms. Priester, Sunland Park, Ms. Reagan, Thurgood Marshall Elementary, Mr. Billings, Walker Elementary, Ms. Reed, William Dandy, Ms. Winston Davis, and also Dillard 6-12, Ms. Robinson. We also have our Central Directors here with us, and our Central Superintendent, Dr. Fulton, is with us, Director Francine Barstow, and Director Ms. Shipman, Director Ms. Darbor, and we also have Mr. Valchunas. So, the presentation that is before you today are broken down in the following categories. We have awards and accolades, enrollment and capacity, school-wide data, building positive school climate, the SMART program as it pertains to Fort Lauderdale, and we'll end with question and answer from the Commission. I am aware of the strict constraint on your agenda, and therefore I kindly ask that you hold all questions until the end, and I will now go through each slide as we move forward. Okay, very good. It's not clicking. Okay, we need a technical person to click us onto the right slide. Do we're good? It's working? Okay, we'll move to the next one. Next one. Technology is always a problem sometimes, right? All right. Okay, so here we have awards and accolades, we have Dillard Elementary, Norfolk Elementary, Rock Island Elementary, Sunland Park Academy, and there are numerous fantastic events occurring in the schools in Fort Lauderdale. For example, Dillard Elementary boasts an award-winning debate team with accomplished scholars. We have, and thank you, Ms. Beasley. Awesome, awesome. Okay, and we also have Norfolk Elementary launching the 5,000 Role Models Program at their schools, and give them a round of applause as well. Now, Rock Island Elementary has increased science scores by 30% points, from 23% to And Sunland Park Academy has established a longstanding partnership with the Young Art Museum. So these are some of the accomplishments, and we'll continue with Thurgood Marshall Elementary has a community student clothing pantry with student uniforms donated by Moss Construction. We have Walker Elementary Magnet School of Performing Arts has an outstanding partnership with the Broad Center for Performing Arts. Their 2023 production of The Lion King was a huge success. We also, there we go, thank you so much. And William Dandy Middle offers an array of programs for students to participate, including track and field, a girls' football team, a cheerleading team, a dance team, and much more. 10 students from Dillard 6-12 were awarded full two-year scholarships from Big Brothers and Big Sisters. There you go. So we're going to move on to enrollment and capacity, and as you can see, there are some schools that have fairly good enrollment as far as the average enrollment in Broward County Schools. In the blue, it's the enrollment, in the orange, it would be the capacity of the school. Some of our schools are also under enrolled, such as Norfolk, you see that, that's 315 and the capacity is 713. We also have Walker, 527, the capacity is 987. So these are schools that we are working with. I have met with the schools in Fort Lauderdale, and we are looking at the schools with low enrollment in how we can actually improve the enrollment by adding additional programs and so on and so forth. I met with Commissioner Beasley, and there were some questions as well regarding repurposing or closing of any schools. We have not had the discussion of closing any schools, as I spoke to Ms. Beasley. The School Board has decided to look at five schools in the entire county for repurposing. But that conversation is ongoing, there's nothing definitive as yet, so we haven't made any decision on any specific schools, as I conveyed to Ms. Beasley when we met. Now, enrollment counts each year, the Demographics and Enrollment Planning Department gathers demographic data on all students in Broward County Public Schools. Each school is unique, so to address the schools with concerning enrollment numbers, I meet with these schools to discuss ways to increase the student enrollment. To increase student enrollment, district staff ensure that they highlight and promote the great programs that the schools in the City of Fort Lauderdale offers, and will continue to do that. And we understand that Broward County Schools are competing with several entities, we're competing with charter schools, we're competing with the vouchers. We also have concerns with the increased price of housing, and some of our parents are moving out of the South Florida region, but nevertheless, we're going to be working diligently and continue to do so to increase enrollment in our schools. So we're going to move to the next slide. And now we're going to have, thank you, Ms. Janice, there we go.
Why does your picture keep popping up? I'm just like...
I don't know, Ms. Janice, you're reversing back to my picture. But I thank her so much, and I would be remiss as well, now that I mentioned that, if you could give my secretary a big round of applause, because she works so hard to keep District 5 going, so I appreciate her so much. Now we're going to have Ms. Sandra Evans, who's going to come up and give us some school-wide data information, so I'll go ahead and have her come on.
Good evening, good evening, good evening. You know, I'm ready to give it. I am Chandra Evans, and I'm going to give you information when it comes to the behavior incidents. When referrals are written, the administrators are the ones to report it. So the information that I'm going to present will be from it. These are the behavior incidents in the suspension update. This is from last year, the entire school from last year. Now, we have some great administrators, thank you guys for allowing me to come to your school to support you, because when they hear the district is coming, you know, it's like, oh, that's the district. But when I go to the schools, I tell them, "I'm a part of your school. My title don't mean anything unless the work is getting done." So, as you can see, how the population from Dillard Elementary all the way down to Dillard High School 6-12. That year, I compared their data when they went over there, and the behavior incidents went down. The decrease went down and the academics went up. So, give it up to Norfolk. When I go on Rock Island, I use some of her strategies and give to others, doesn't matter if it's in the north region or the south region, because we're one district. So I love to give best practices to everyone else. Sunland doing a great job, thank you, Ms. Reagan, they're telling me, "My doors is always open." They'll always have me come to their school. Walker doing a good job, everybody doing a good job. Let's look at William Dandy. Ms. Please, please stand up. For the past two years, I looked at the tier, I say, "Let's put something together, we." I never say "you," "we." This year, she will be, her school is the Bronze Medal for Model Schools, give it up for their... It's not easy, it's not easy in middle school. Trust me, it's not easy in middle school. Let's look at Dillard 6-12. Now, you see the numbers, it's like 187 external suspensions. Guess what? Ms. Robinson has six levels under her belt. And I'm going to say, I'm a product of Dillard High School. I graduated 1990. I worked at Dillard High School for four years, so I know the need there. Today, I trained six hours there with teachers, giving them structure and positive interventions there. Ms. Robinson made sure, she was texting me in the evening time, like, "How'd she get my personal?" You know, they have my district, "How'd she get my personal?" However, she was eager, I was eager to go there, and the teachers had a great time to receive what has been given. So, I'm quite sure next year, the numbers will not be that way. We're working hard, we're working hard, because it's not easy in that area. It's not, and I will get with Ms. Beasley, Ms. Pittman, me and you are going to have a meeting of what we can do. Because it's times when I see the fights on the outside, I'm about to go and stop the kids, but when I see the parents out there with them, I just keep going and let the schools know, "Listen, you're going to have a situation tomorrow," and how I could be there to support. So that's the behavior incidents and suspension update from last year, the entire school of last year. Now here, this data measures the behavioral health. Because of time, I'm going to just tell you guys, when we have 80%, you see all the blue? That means 80%, 0 to 1 student had one referral. Meaning, when you have 80% and more, the school is behaviorally healthy. So give it up to all the schools, because it's very hard, but their schools are behaviorally healthy. You can go to the... You don't have? Okay, here, the top five incidents, infractions. How do these students, how do they get, you know, their infractions? How do they get their consequence? When Chandra do anything, it goes in the system, the administrator does not say what happens to the student. The matrix is given, the matrix, like, if I get stopped by the police officer because I was speeding, I might get a warning, I might get a ticket. However, the police officer have their statute of policy, what takes place, that's just like what takes place in the school system. Whatever infraction is taking place, there's a consequence too. However, we, as a district, we as schools, we don't try to just suspend kids and put them out in the street. We try to put a process together, it's a four-step process, what happened with Chandra? What Chandra is doing? Now let's find out what's going on with Chandra. Now let's put something in place for Chandra. Now if that doesn't work, and just like I shared with the teachers today, and I shared with the Commissioner of Sunrise, six years ago, Dr. Fulton, I ran into her at Dillard Elementary when she was coming through as the cadre director. I was talking to her, she was like, "What's going on?" I say, I was telling her, she said, "If that doesn't work, try something else. If that doesn't work, try something else." So in my training, I use her and let them know, Dr. Fulton said, "If something doesn't work, try something else." We have to try and help our children, and that's what we're doing in this school system. It's in the house. It's in the house. So, what do Chandra do with the schools? Like today, I'm tired, you know, I'm really tired, but I'm giving energy right now to you guys. I do ICHEMs training. I go into the schools and find out what teachers need support. I told them after this training, it's not that they give me a final report, I'm coming to their classroom and see if they implement. It's not that I got you, it's how can I continue to help you? We give, during the big five data, at the end of each quarter, administrators have to send me their data, so I can see what's going on in first quarter versus second quarter versus third quarter versus fourth quarter. And we put a plan together, okay, what's going on with, you know, with the sixth graders? I see the sixth graders have this. Now we work on with the sixth grader, now it going to be something with the seventh graders. So it's a whole bunch of... So it's a whole bunch of support we give to our schools. Prevention, choose peace, peer counseling, think before you post. One school was doing like a demonstration of how, if I bump into you, and you know, we're going to act like we fight, but then we'll do it the right way. So we give a lot of things to our schools. So right now, we're just building positive school climate, the bullying, choose peace, pro-social clubs. We just have a lot for our schools. And I'm here to be a part of it. I'm here to support them. It doesn't matter, I'm here to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Holness, is there more to the presentation?
Okay, so we're going to have Ms. Yvonne Garrett give us some update on the SMART program for schools in Fort Lauderdale as well.
Good evening. My name's Yvonne Garrett. I'm with Garrett Solutions. We're part of the program management team. I am pleased to be here this evening. Thank you for having us to give a brief update on the SMART program. But before I begin, I just wanted to just share regrets on behalf of my colleague from AECOM, who fell under the weather this afternoon and wasn't able to make it. So here I am. Next slide, please. So there are actually thirty-four schools that serve the city of Fort Lauderdale, but for the purposes of tonight, we were asked to just give a highlight on eight of them. Happy to answer any questions and any additional schools. But beginning with Dillard Elementary School, we have, the SMART program was allocated a little over four million dollars for Dillard Elementary School. As you can see, the roofing work is about almost eighty percent complete, so we're getting close to substantial completion, and the HVAC work is ongoing. We expect to have the projects completed for Dillard Elementary School by second quarter of 2024. Next slide, please. For Dillard six through twelve, the roofing work in buildings five and six is complete. There is some additional roofing work that is being addressed, and the construction on the remainder of the GOB program is nearing completion as well. And as you can see, a little over thirteen million dollars was allocated to Dillard six through twelve. Next slide, please. For North Fork Elementary School, as you heard from Dr. Holness, this is one of the schools that is under enrolled. This SMART project has been, is now in the planning process and is being reevaluated. The scope is being reevaluated to determine the best path forward for the community. Next slide, please. For Rock Island Elementary School, the work for the SMART program is complete. Next slide. Sunland Park Academy is also complete. Next slide. Thurgood Marshall Elementary School has four point four million dollars of work. That is nearing completion. As you can see, we're substantially complete, just going through the final bits of punch list work. Next slide. Walker Elementary School has a budget of three point four million and is about three quarters of the way through the construction work and is expected to be completed in third quarter of 2024. Next slide. And William Dandy Middle School has a budget of seven point two million. Also, the roofing work is just about complete, and the fire alarm installation is underway. We expect all the work to be completed by third quarter of 2024. Next slide. And school choice enhancement, the school choice enhancement program is a program where a hundred thousand dollars was allocated to every school. The school had the discretion to use those funds as they deemed appropriate for their particular school. All of those projects across the county have been completed. Next slide. And the last bit of information I would share is, I will quickly cover it, eight schools, very quickly. But on the, we do have a dedicated website, bcpsmartfutures.com/fortlauderdale. It is a dedicated webpage for the city of Fort Lauderdale, where you can stay up to date on the progress of schools in your particular city. So thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you once again, Mayor Trentalis. And I just wanted to quickly mention that district strategies support priority schools within Fort Lauderdale as well. Information provided by Dr. Hepburn, which is our deputy superintendent of teaching and learning. We look at, we determine the needs of support for schools. We review past data trends. We look at student performance on state and district assessments. We look at school discipline. We also look at school attendance and teacher vacancy and turnover rates. And we provide support for schools. We, for example, we focus on developing our teachers to improve instructional practices for rigorous standards-based instruction. We develop school leadership capacities to support ongoing teacher development, and we focus on school culture and climate. Now, in addition to that, I just want to mention that I have visited all of the schools in Fort Lauderdale in District Five, and this is to gather information from our principal and our school-based staff as to how we can work with the schools to ensure that we are maximizing student learning performance and outcome. So I just want to thank you so much, and I will now open the floor for any questions you may have. I know that time is of the constraint, so if you have additional questions that you'd like to email us as well, my email is jeffholness@broadschools.com. I know you don't want to have fourteen-hour meetings like we do at the school board on Tuesdays, so, but you may go ahead and ask any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions of Dr. Holness? I do have a comment.
Yes, okay.
Thank you for your service, and we appreciate your enduring those fourteen-hour meetings, because you know, it's the dedication, I mean, you don't get paid a lot, you certainly, it's a personal sacrifice and definitely a commitment, but I know we definitely appreciate your work. Vice Mayor, do you have any words you'd like to share?
Um, yes, I just would like to say thank you as well. Great presentation, and for you desiring to come and share with us. And one of the schools, Thurgood Marshall, is actually in District Two with Glassman. So if you, I don't know if you reached out to him yet, but that would be a great opportunity to have a conversation with him as well.
Wonderful.
But thank you to all the principals and all the great work and teachers that you're doing, what you're doing, yes. I'm smiling from ear to ear to be a part of District Three, where District Five School Board is working diligently to ensure the health and the education of our next generation or this generation, I should say.
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you very much.
So as we move on to the next aspect of our agenda, it's called the Consent Agenda. At this time, the city commission will vote on all the consent agenda items at once. I will also offer them the opportunity to pull any consent agenda item, which they would like to discuss and vote on separately. If there's anyone in the audience who has signed up to speak on a consent agenda item that has not been pulled, I will invite you to speak before we vote, and then we can move on. So Commissioner Herbst, do you have any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull? Vice Mayor?
None.
Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sturman?
CR four.
CR four, okay. All righty, CR four. Now, Chancelle Dean has asked to speak on CR three, but you're in support of it, so I think we're good. You don't really have to come up and speak unless you really want to. I guess she really wants to.
Good evening. My name is Chancelle Dean, and I'm here to speak on...
CR three.
CR three. This is my first time here. I've never been. So I'd like to say thank you very much for listening to me. My street name, where I lived, at Twenty-First Avenue, has been changed to George A. Dean the Second, which is my father. My father was the first band director at Dillard High School. He is also on one of the, I call them electrical boxes that you see down Sisdrunk when you travel down there. And he's there with the band. And every morning I pass, I have to just smile, and I tell him every single morning, good morning, Daddy, AKA George A. Dean the Second. The sign has been now there for three years, and I'm very, very proud every time I turn down that street. As a matter of fact, I'm living in the same house that my father bought with my mother in nineteen fifty, so we've been there like seventy years. So when the street was changed during, I guess, the pandemic, I was happening to pull up and I saw the guys changing it. I'm very proud, and every time I see it, to know that that's my father. And I would like for it to stay the way it is. It would save the city money to change, and I'm quite sure everybody wants to save money. So I'm just here to say that, thank you, and I would like for it to see it the way it is now. It is George A. Dean the Second, and then North Twenty-First Avenue there, under. So I'm just saying, I'm very, very, I would be, I'm very appreciative and would like for it to remain.
Okay, very good. So except for CR four, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
Approve.
Second.
You've moved the seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes. CR four, Commissioner.
Oh, CR four, item J under CR four, it's thirty-five thousand dollars for land acquisition. That's supposed to, the closeout, supposed to go back to the general fund. We had spoken to Parks and City Manager, and I think the plan was that it was going to be redirected towards Rivlin Woods Community Center. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
So I'm going to ask Laura to talk about those specifics, what can be done in this funding allocation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Laura Reese, Director of Office of Management and Budget. In this item, it's simply moving money out of the land purchase and back into the Parks Bond fund balance. If it's your preference to keep it in that project until it's allocated into a new project, that's fine as well.
Yes, that would be my preference.
So in that case, I would recommend approving the item with the exception of item J, and so everything else could move forward, and we'll just keep those other balances in the District Four and the other account until we move it to the ultimate location.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, can I make a motion to that effect?
Well, I had a question first, I'm sorry.
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because we've discussed this item also, will this set any kind of precedent? Because this is a, basically, this happens because we lay out that, we have that money allocated, but then we close it out for every district, for every purchase, because we bring it back, we're actually still using it as a placeholder, correct?
Yeah, so in this case, at the time, so in the Parks Bond, there's an allocation by district for land.
Right.
So at the time you go to purchase land, the estimated amount for the land purchases is put in place. For example, this is District Four, Southwest Fifth Court and Twelfth Avenue. So the four million dollars, four million fifty thousand dollars was appropriated as the estimated cost. There's twenty-four thousand dollars left, so that still counts as District Four money that's left. So if the commissioner would like to leave it in that account, that's fine, or if he'd like to move it into the next account, that's fine as well. But Parks is going to be tracking district by district how much of the land account was used, in either case.
Right, each district gets, correct me if I'm wrong, seven point five million dollars in the Parks Bond for land acquisition.
That sounds correct.
So I'm just saying, if we're going to do this now, for this, then we must be consistent and do that with every district, in terms of how we're going to allocate the money, how we're going to keep it, how we're going to move it in and out of, you know, the general fund and the Parks Bond. I just want to make sure that if we're doing this now, we are consistent moving forward, and we do this for every single instance like this, where there is monies that are left over.
Yeah, this would just be skipping that in-between step, where it's put back and then appropriated at a later time back into land, so...
Right, but will we be doing that now, going forward, for every single district? In other words, will we be skipping that middle step that you just explained?
I don't have a preference, but at the end of the day, we'll track that that seven million dollars is spent district by district.
Seven point five.
Seven point five million dollars.
Right. Don't take away five hundred thousand.
I will not.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that we're being consistent. Whatever we do here now on letter J, I just want to make sure that we're consistent in the policy and the process for every single district for land acquisition, that's all.
So explain that again, to summarize, what the policy you think is the policy?
It's what she just said.
Yes, so it's a little interesting, because that seven point five million dollars the commissioner's speaking of, it hasn't all been appropriated at this point. We issue debt, and we use the funds when they're needed. So not every commissioned district has identified the land they're going to purchase. So we, it's not like everyone has their money in place, and we would have that to move. You know what I'm saying?
It's a ledger.
Yeah, it's really, it's just a tracking mechanism.
It's not kept in a separate, isolated account.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you understand that, Commissioner Herbst?
But we are tracking to the ultimate budget.
Thank you.
Laura and I work on that.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, so, yeah, we can be consistent and keep it in projects until such time it goes to the next project, if that's a preference of the commission.
So we're not transferring the balances back to the Parks and Bond account?
It's in the, it's in the account. It's just, it's just identified in a separate ledger. It's, it never left the account.
Okay, well, if you read the cam, though, it does say that we'd like to close out the projects by transferring the remaining balances in the projects back to the Parks Bond account.
Right, so the reason departments like to do this is, if this doesn't happen, they'll have to report on it every month. So Parks will just have to report, you know, per the district commissioner's request, the funding is staying in this account. So it's, either case, we're going to track against that appropriation.
Okay, I just, again, I just want us to be consistent throughout, that's all. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve that item?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
May I approve it, yeah, as we, as stated, yeah.
Okay. And there's, is there a second?
I think, no, I think Laura said to approve the entire agenda item minus letter J.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, correct, yes.
So it's as amended. CR four, as amended, excluding item J.
Correct.
Is there a second to that?
Mayor, it's a resolution.
Resolution.
It's just a resolution.
You're right. So you're introducing the resolution.
Right.
Okay. Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the city of Fort Lauderdale's fiscal year 2024 final all-funds budget for the fiscal year beginning October one, 2023, and ending September thirty, 2024, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the City Commission Amendment Twenty-three dash zero nine seven two, amending the city of Fort Lauderdale fiscal year 2024, fiscal year 2028, community investment plan for the fiscal years beginning October one, 2023, and ending September thirty, 2028, as amended by appropriating and transferring funds as set forth in the City Commission Amendment Twenty-three dash zero nine seven two, and providing for severability and effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Commissioner Herbst? It's okay. We're voting, we're voting on the resolution, the consolidated budget amendment, except for J.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley-Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalis?
Yes, and that item is approved. Moving on to M one, excuse me. This is a motion approving event agreements with related road closures and requests for music exemption for the BRT All White and Thirty-Eighth Annual Fort Lauderdale International Film Festival premiere party. Did that already happen?
Yeah, Mayor, I have some questions and comments on this agenda item.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't have enough information in reading the backup about the BRT All White request or the event. It's hard to see. I'd just like to know from someone if we have a history with this event, exactly what we're anticipating. The detailed description, it's not very detailed, it just says food, drinks, music, and ride. So I, you know, it's like, usually we get a description of what an event is. That's very general, it's anything but detailed. Dates have been changed, times have been changed. There's just a lot going on with this application, and also the fact that we really don't have any information besides what the name is. I gather that it's Beach Something or Other, and I guess it's, everyone has to wear white, but I'm hoping that's what it is. So I, you know, I just, I'm really hoping that that's what it is.
What does the boss have to say on this? Well, can you push the button? Push the button. No, no, not that one. It's on the microphone. It's on, no, the bottom of the mic. It's now, oh, you just turned it off. Okay.
Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, you hit it right on the nose with that one, it is, uh, everybody dressing all white.
Thank goodness. Can you just, have you done this event in Fort Lauderdale before?
I have not done this specific event in Fort Lauderdale before, but, um, the event is going to be everybody dressing all white. We're going to have food vendors, uh, we're going to have amusement rides, also, we're going to have Caribbean music playing.
Okay, and this is going to be on Southwest Third Avenue between Broward Boulevard and Southwest, uh, Second Street?
Correct.
Okay, um, and is there a primary reason for this event? Or what, what's, what's behind the event, if you could help me with that?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Hans Smallings, um, we've been doing this event for 12 years. We have done it in the Florida Keys, we've done it in Palm Beach. We are the owners of Club Euro downtown Fort Lauderdale for 12 years, so we've been in Fort Lauderdale for 12 years. So this year, instead of doing it in Palm Beach, or do it, or doing it in Island Marauder, Key Largo, we decided to do it here, which, what we do, we block off the road and we have a Caribbean festival. We get, bring in a lot of Caribbean artists, performers, DJs, and we do a lot of natural acts. We bring also carnival rides where everyone who has a ticket to enter get to go on the different rides. We have food trucks, we have, um, bars and, and stuff like, so it's basically the same block party that, um, that they have different time for Halloween and stuff like that. But we never got a chance to participate as Club Euro, so this year, we just said, let's do it right here in front of the club that we own and on the same street in the neighborhood that we have been in this neighborhood for 12 years.
Okay, have, have you had discussions, I guess the closest neighborhood association to this in District Two would be maybe Flagler Village Civic Association, but then also the Himishy District as well. But have you worked with these folks and have let them know and have, are they knowledgeable about this event?
Yes, we already had meetings with them and that's why, uh, the dates have been moved, because some of the dates that we were planning on doing on, on before, there was already events planned with Riverwalk. So we are, we had meetings around Riverwalk, uh, the police, uh, fire, all the departments.
Have you had any meetings with folks from the Himishy area or perhaps Flagler Village or even Sailboat Bend, which is not that far, but mostly Flagler Village?
No, but it's, it's not in the area where we're doing it at. So we spoke to all the business owners on our block, which we would affect, which is at Riverwalk.
It's not near Flagler, it's south of Broward.
Southwest Third Avenue between Broward.
It's south of Broward.
Right, and Southwest Second Street, most, it's probably the closest neighborhood.
It's Himishy.
Yeah, I know, it's Himishy.
So we, yeah, we, we spoke to everybody in Himishy.
Okay, okay.
It's a little confusing, what's, why do you have Snyder Park fees here? You know we're near Snyder Park.
Um, I think it was a mistake on, um, their part.
What, is there?
So it's not, it's not in Snyder Park, it's, it's right on Nugent Avenue.
That's what I thought.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, no, I thank you for being here and at least giving us that information, um, thank you. And Mayor, the second part of this is, and this came up in my pre-agenda meeting last night with the district. So for instance, you just mentioned the Thirty-Eighth Annual Fort Lauderdale International Film Festival premiere party. That party is actually in two days.
Wait, do you have any more questions?
Oh no, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor, do you have any questions with these gentlemen? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to you.
Yes, back to me, so this, this party is in two days from now. So this brings up an issue, and I know I've mentioned this before, but it came up in my pre-agenda meeting last night. I think that we just need to do a better job so that the public is aware of these events, no matter what they are. I mean, right now, we're looking at an event that we're supposed to approve that's going to be in two days from now. Why would we want to say no and then what happens to that event? It's two days, it's not fair to us, it's not fair to the applicant who's proposing the event. But in general, I, I hear this over and over and over, that applications are coming to the Special Events Committee way too late, way too close to events, things are missing from the applications, there are errors, there's omissions. And that's just not fair to the public and to the neighborhoods. They just, we, I think we just need to do a better job in getting these done earlier. It doesn't seem to be much of a hindrance to folks to just pay that extra money when it's really close to the event, uh, because I know it is a little bit more expensive, but City Manager, I was just asked that we do a little bit of a better job, um, making sure that we see these events come to the committee earlier and then to us earlier, so everyone can be on the same page and we can, uh, hopefully see a decrease in the errors and the omissions and the applications. And just let the public know, uh, what's going on.
We will do that, we will do that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Well, you, you've asked of that many, many times.
Yes, I have.
And, um, you know, these folks are not, you know, it's the Thirty-Eighth Annual, so they're used to knowing the policy. So, I mean, no, what is that expression, um, no, no foul, no? No harm, no foul, so, um, luckily, nothing's going to, nothing's going to run amiss here, but, uh, um, it's a pretty passive kind of, uh, undertaking here at Sabre Cinema. But, uh, but to your point, I think we need to know, we need to alert the neighborhood well in advance of two days, I agree with you.
I'm sorry, when is the date of this event? When is the date of the event?
Of the film festival party?
Yes.
It's in two days, it's on the ninth Thursday night, this Thursday.
Did you get your tickets?
I'm looking at, I see December 10th, I'm trying to figure out what.
Oh, really? No, I, I think it's the ninth.
That was the previous application.
It's, um, yeah, there's two applications.
That was BRT.
There's two events on this, uh, agenda item, there's the BRT and then there's the film festival.
Thank you, got it.
Any other questions regarding this item? Okay.
I'm happy to move it.
Okay, the items are moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
You've moved the seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M one is approved, M two, motion approving an event agreement, related road closures and request for music exemption for food in motion. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
You've moved the seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M two is approved, M three, motion approving an event agreement and related road closure for South Florida Exotic Car Toy Rally to Benefit Toys for Tots. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M three is approved, M four, motion approving an increase to the Stormwater Master Plan Modeling and Design Implementation Continuing Contract Cost Capacity. With Hazen and Sawyer, uh, I have one person who signed up to speak, um, Dwayne Akerblom? Akerblom, excuse me, um, is Dwayne here? Dwayne is here?
Mm-hmm.
Good evening.
Good evening, so I kind of, last minute came, I work for the City of Boca Raton, I've been a resident, born and raised Fort Lauderdale for forty, forty years old, and I live on the water, so I know the, all the issues we have with, uh, stormwater issues. And, uh, I think raising the budget cap, uh, by over thirty percent at two point three million dollars for Hazen and Sawyer at this time, in my opinion, is not needed. They have had eight years to perform data collection, modeling, planning, preliminary design and neighborhood outreach for seven priority neighborhoods. They have been paid an average of seven hundred thousand per year. This means with the current cap, the city has another three plus years of funds for this contract. You can utilize city staff and USGS for public outreach and data collection. Raising seawalls and adding pump stations is the right way to address the rising sea levels and prevent flooding. This is a very costly solution, but it's a simple one. I don't know the city's engineers, but I'm sure they can handle developing a standard seawall elevation and pump station design. I request those funds instead go toward repairing roadways that have been damaged and are in ill repair due to failing current stormwater drainage systems. Let's not just throw taxpayer money at the problem, let's, uh, make it go as far as we can.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. You're welcome. Mr. Mayor, if I may? Yeah, well, hold on a second, does anyone else wish to speak on this subject? Okay, Greg?
I just wanted to say to, for clarity, this increase is to accelerate the stormwater plan, um, so that's why we're asking for this increase. Additionally, um, we have limited staff and it's hard right now to find professionals, so our best, uh, ability to reach the objectives of the commission is to, um, partner with someone from the outside.
Okay, thank you. All right, would someone like to introduce the motion?
Introduce.
Make the motion, I'm sorry, uh, someone like to second it?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M four is approved, M five, motion approving a first amendment to the comprehensive, to the comprehensive agreement with La Solis Parking Solutions for the development, operation and maintenance of a multi-use structure with, um, public parking, a fire rescue EMS substation and retail at the southeast corner of Southeast Second Court and Southeast Eighth Avenue. No one, uh, only, uh, one person has signed up to speak for questions only. Anyone like to make the motion to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M five is approved, we have M six, this is a motion rejecting all proposals for management of the Jimmy Everett Tennis Center, request for proposal. We have, uh, one person who signed up to speak, Brandon Flanagan from Delray Beach. Brandon, are you here? Yeah, there you are.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Brandon Flanagan, I'm managing partner of FM Tennis, a local South Florida-based tennis management company. After a thorough selection process, we were humbled to be selected as the highest ranking firm to submit a proposal in response to the RFP for the Jimmy Everett Tennis Center. My request tonight is simple, I would like to request the postponement of this motion for one month to allow our firm the opportunity to make our case to you, the city manager and the stakeholders. I attended the commission meeting where certain tennis center patrons voiced their concerns about private management. At that time, I recognized their concerns not, to not be consistent with our proposal specifically and the vision we outlined for the tennis center. I believe if given ample opportunity, we can demonstrate that our plan for management of the tennis center will be the best option for the people of Fort Lauderdale. The Parks and Recreation Department's presentation that day did not mention the specifics of our proposal, nor mention our firm by name, even though we, we were deemed, uh, the most appropriate firm. Rather, we were lumped in with other private companies that we have proven to distinguish ourselves from over the course of our company's history. I believe that if the department had illustrated the specifics of our proposal, it would have assuaged nearly all of the concerns those patrons had that day, as well as show the benefit of our proposal to countless others that were not represented. As a matter of fact, some of the concerns expressed are the very same reasons we got into this business ourselves. I believe our request to be fair, considering if the motion is, is postponed, the status quo will be maintained as the city will continue to run the center as it has done. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, does anyone else wish to speak on this item? There being none, uh, Commissioner Glassman, this is your district, do you have any thoughts on this item?
It is my district, thank you. Mayor, I've been having lots of meetings with the folks from the tennis center, the, the membership, uh, for over a year now. Also discussions with the immediate neighborhood, Victoria Park Civic Association. Everyone seems pretty pleased with this right now, they, they, they came, as we all remember, to our commission meeting and, uh, basically said exactly what this CAM says, that they want to see the city do what this says and they want to see a professional hired, um, someone that will be able to fill a lot of roles, uh, to do something that's been missing there at that center for a while. So I am, uh, I'm actually in support of this agenda item. It's, it's really what I'm hearing, uh, from the membership of the Jimmy Everett Tennis Center and it's what I'm hearing from, uh, the immediate neighborhood, thank you.
So are you making a motion to approve the, uh, item here?
Yes, which would actually be a motion to reject all proposals for management of the Jimmy Everett Tennis Center, request for proposal, RFP number 106.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay, um, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Well, just, okay, just.
Do you want to add to, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, the only question, just so everybody's clear, a motion in favor, this is a motion rejecting the proposal.
Correct.
And that's what you want to write. Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to support the district commissioner on this one, I'm going to vote, uh, yes.
Commissioner Herbst? Not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, uh, and the, uh, motion is approved to reject all proposals and we'll, uh, ask the city manager to come back with, uh, other further recommendations. What's going on with our sound system here? A lot of feedback. Moving ahead, moving ahead, um, R one, appointment of board and committee members. Mr. Clerk, would you please like to read the names into the record?
Yes, for the November twenty first, twenty twenty-three resolution for the Central City Redevelopment Advisor Board, Ross Parker and Guy Kemp, both consensus nominations by Mayor Trentalles. Budget Advisor Board, Melissa Milroy, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. And Public Art and Placement Advisor Board, Andrew Martino, that's a consensus appointment nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And for tonight's resolution, Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Roderick Newkirk, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. Aviation Advisory Board, Kevin McElany, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Education Advisor Board, Pamela Aiken, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman. Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issued Blue Ribbon Committee, John Vritstenes, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. General Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, Douglas Mead, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Parks Rec Beaches Board, Caleb Gunther, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Sustainability Advisor Board, Jason Kirchhoff, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And we had a couple names that, uh, came in after, uh, publication. If we could add it to the resolution as amended, uh, Community Appearance Board, Saron Debradrosin, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. And Aviation Advisor Board, Mark Volcheck, nominated by Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman, and that rounds it out for tonight.
Okay, are there any other modifications or additions to those, uh, those names announced tonight? Okay, they're being done, would someone like to introduce their resolution as amended?
Apologies.
Been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, boarding committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too and made a part here of. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R one is now approved, for those folks who are, uh, who are now appointed to those boards or committees, thank you for your commitment to our community. R two, resolution approving an agreement allowing for the issuance of building permits prior to plat recordation between Broward County and the City of Fort Lauderdale. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
A resolution, resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an agreement for the issuance of building permits prior to plat approval and recordation for the essential building government facilities between Broward County, Florida and the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, agreeing to remove all improvements if the City of Fort Lauderdale fails to record the plat by the deadline in the agreement unless the plat is reapproved within three months and recorded before the expiration of the new approval, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and for pride, providing for conflicts, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and R two is approved, R three, uh, this is a resolution approving and adopting the twenty twenty-four state legislative program for the City of Fort Lauderdale. I have one person signed up to speak, Mr. Nelson, you've been patient all afternoon, please come on up. How are you? Wait, push that, yeah, great.
Hello, Mayor Dean, hello Commissioners, Chris Nelson, Fort Lauderdale. And I live in a condo in La Solis by the river. And I don't know if you guys were at the delegation meeting, uh, that was at the county commission talking about legislative priorities, but there is a major thing that is coming up and that is the impact of the Condo Safety Act that happened after the Surfside collapse. Now, it's so important that we have condo safety, that was a horrific, horrific tragedy that we never want to see happen again. But these, uh, requirements for fully funded reserves for, uh, concrete restoration, we're facing, uh, a special assessment coming up for a concrete restoration project. There's a lot going on, especially while the insurance, uh, the insurance problems are happening, that's, uh, that, you know, and you see insurance going up every year, thank God, five new insurance companies came in. Uh, so hopefully we'll be seeing that level out. But there are a lot of condo owners, many who are seniors, many too who live on the gult, who are going to be facing possibly having to sell their units that they've lived in for many years. And there's a lot of just regular people that own units that are going to be, um, having to possibly sell them and they're, they're dealing with some serious hardships right now. So this was the main topic at the, uh, delegation meeting. So I am asking the commission to look into this, look in any way we can pressure the state, uh, look at. state, uh, look into anything that you can do. I know that Mayor Dean is gonna find a billion dollars for his tunnel, uh, somehow. So if he can find a billion dollars for the tunnel, then, uh, that he's got some kind of magic going on, hopefully he can find some money or some way we can help people that are going to be facing these massive special assessments that are going on right now. This is gonna be a big thing, I'm sure you've probably heard about it from, uh, from your constituents. So, anything that this commission can do to make this a priority is very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Actually, uh, what Mr. Nelson is talking about, uh, is very much, uh, very significant to our community, because we have quite a few co-ops in condominium buildings here in our city. And, um, in the past, um, these, these associations allow their members to waive the hundred percent reserve requirement, uh, or to allow a reduced reserve requirement by vote of the, uh, membership. Commissioners, uh, Glassman and Sturman, you, oh, actually, Herbst too, I mean, you all have significant population with, uh, that are going to be affected by the kind of legislation that Mr. Nelson is speaking about. Commissioner Herbst, do you want to comment on this? Do you want us to add something to our legislative priorities in this regard?
So, a-actually, Mayor, we have, so this is one of the things, and I was talking with, uh, Chris about this before, so one of the things that we've added into our legislative priorities was a request for the state to consider establishing a mechanism on a needs-based, um, approach, similar to perhaps the PACE financing, so that we can allow for the financing of these, uh, these assessments and build it into their tax rule. Um, that way, if they pass away, it travels with the property to whomever inherits it. If they sell it, it moves along to the buyer. So I believe that's one of the ones that we have in there. I've also had a conversation with Representative Chip Lamarcia on this same issue, um, and, uh, so I'm, I'm hoping we can get some traction with something, because again, this is not just a local issue, uh, as I shared with Chris, you know, when the, when the state did this, and I agree with what they've done, um, there's some challenges with the implementation timeframes, but the overall concept of the fact that many of our condos have neglected the upkeep and maintenance of their facilities and essentially kicked the can down the road, uh, is something that we all recognize. And, and this, this goes from, from Jacksonville down to Key West and out to the Panhandle. All of our communities throughout the state are impacted by this. So I look at this as not something that we can solve here at the local level, but something that really needs to be addressed at the state level. And, uh, and again, that's why when we were developing our legislative agenda, it was one of the things that I brought up. Uh, you may even recall, Mayor, that I had talked about wanting us to adopt a resolution along the same line, so I, I think both of those things can work in concert with each other.
Okay, so I, I see on, uh, page six of the legislative priorities, there is an additional line item which says, um, that we support, uh, legislation that creates state funding mechanism to assist seniors to offset the cost of inspections required under law. And I believe that's, that's what the commission is referring to, to allow for, um, a, well, just it says seniors, but it should be anybody.
And I think it should be, I think it should be needs-based, because we have some lower-income individuals who may not be seniors, and we have some very wealthy seniors, so I think we just really need to focus it more on those who don't have the ability to pay and would need the benefit of low-interest, uh, financing that extends out for perhaps, you know, twenty years, life of the improvement or, or so forth, so.
Do you want to modify that, then?
I would absolutely choose to do that.
So, creates a state funding mechanism to assist need-based, uh, residents to offset the cost of, of, uh, not inspections, but the cost of, uh, capital improvements required under law.
Capital improvements and reserve requirements.
Yeah, I think the language should be.
But it might also be inspections, because I forgot what it's called, I think it's called SIRS, S-I-R-S.
Is that right?
Structural Integrity Reserve Study, I think is what that stands for, that's mandated. Every condominium association has to do a, uh, that exact study, uh, prior to January of twenty twenty-five, and that can cost upwards of twenty thousand dollars itself, that's just the study.
For the building?
Yes, and then that puts everything into motion.
Okay.
I'm also waiting, because I know that when Commissioner Herbst brought this to our attention in terms of a resolution, we deferred it to just clean up some language, but we have not seen that returned to us, um, in terms of some of that language that we had asked for. But just so Mr. Nelson knows, if you go to the backup, that is on Exhibit One, page six of thirteen, that we're talking about now, under Commission Legislative Priorities, Housing and Community Development, that's where we have the language that we're discussing, um, right now. And I, I thank him for bringing that to everyone's attention, but I also hope that he's bringing this to the attention of not just State Representative Chip Lamarcia, but also our State Senator Jason Pizzo. Um, the two of them really need to get on this, because as Commissioner Herbst just said, this is not something that we have the power, uh, to deal with on a local level. We can look at ways to help, you know, help with some sort of funding, but it's never gonna be what we could do in terms of what the state could do, um, to make a much larger, um, impact. But this, Mayor, coupled with the insurance crisis in, that's what I hear the most about from the condominiums in District Two, um, it's not just so much a matter of dealing with this reserve study and these kinds of monies that have to be set aside, especially for buildings that have never had reserves, but it's really the insurance, the property insurance. I know just as an example, where I live, the lowest that we've ever had in the last ten, twelve years was about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar premium, all in. That's every single piece of the insurance that we have to have in a condominium. That two-fifty low, this year that we're just doing for our budget next month, is now six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And that's not even as bad as I've heard in other condominiums. So it really is an outrageous, outrageous situation, um, that's really squeezing people, um, in these buildings. Thank you.
So are you, um, is that anywhere in this backup, in the insurance?
I, I wish that we could add something about the fact.
That's what the purpose of this item is.
Yes, that we, we really should add something where we're advocating for some sort of relief, uh, and also some sort of legislation, because the only legislation that was done in terms of insurance, there was a special session this year, but it really, I, I would say, in my opinion, and others might disagree, but the special legislation that was passed was really a help to the insurance companies, not necessarily to the consumer, uh, who have to purchase this insurance, uh, as condominium associations or even individual, uh, condominium units, I think that's an HO six policy. Um, but that's what the legislation did, it did not help the consumer.
So can we defer this item, so we can ask Tom to maybe come up with some, uh, language to augment the backup? I mean, the, the session doesn't begin for another couple of months, um, perhaps we can put this on another agenda item?
There was a resolution that wasn't finished up? Is that what happened?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let me find that, retrieve it and get that.
Daphne, do you want to say something?
To be consistent with what you've asked for.
You want to push the button?
Yes. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor Commissioners, so with, with this item, we would enable our team to begin advocating for everything that was discussed tonight, so I can make the edits after tonight and send it and circulate it after, um, primarily for the appropriation requests that are in there, unless you allow me to continue submitting the items to secure sponsors. Appropriation requests have to be in by November fourteenth. The latest securing sponsors is very difficult at this time, so I've already secured a majority of the ones that were top priorities. When it comes to insurance, they are actually in special session this week. Um, I was watching it today, they haven't discussed insurance yet, but we are anticipating that it will, um, be agendered, uh, later this week.
Right, but, but, um, I think we're kidding ourselves if we think that, you know, it's going to be addressed during the special session, so I think that, um, is it possible for you to work with our, our city attorney and come up with language? If you want us to pass a partial, uh, resolution that relates specifically to the appropriation items?
Yeah, I think we can bifurcate it, Mayor. Let's focus on the funding request and, and let's leave the policy statements to, uh, for a follow-up, because, yeah, they're not gonna be considering policy statements at this point.
Correct. All right, so, um, so would someone like to introduce a resolution, uh, regarding the state legislative program for the City of Fort Lauderdale that, uh, contains only the appropriation items?
Introduced as described.
Okay. Um, any other, any further questions? All right, there being none, uh, please call the roll.
Okay, this is, as amended, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving and adopting the City of Fort Lauderdale's twenty twenty-four state legislative program, authorizing the city manager to approve any subsequent changes to the city's twenty twenty-four state legislative program for the duration of the twenty twenty-four legislative session and providing for an effective date. Commissioners Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Just a clarification, please, th- this is to do the entire package, but we're bifurcating this, don't we have to amend this agenda item in any way?
I just said that.
Well, but we did, but that's not what was just said.
We said we're only including the appropriation items.
I, I understand, but that's not what the clerk read, and I just want to make sure that he reads it so that we are actually doing what our intent is.
Okay.
Because the way he's reading it is the entire, uh, state legislative program as is in the agenda, and that's not what we're doing.
So, I, I have the header to read, I can, I guess, switch it up based on what the attorney's office says for me to read, but that's why I said as amended prior to reading it.
Okay. As, as long as we're clear on that.
Okay, yeah, I want everyone to be clear, we're not, we're not voting on the entire thing, we're just voting on the appropriation items.
And then will this be, do we have to defer the rest of this agenda item?
We are deferring the rest of the agenda item to be taken up at the next meeting.
Okay, we don't have to vote on that defer, we're good?
We're, we're not there yet, so as soon as we're there, I'll be happy to, uh, suggest that someone introduce it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I could also point out that I advised that the resolution Mr. Herbst is talking about was done, somehow it didn't make it to the agenda, so we'll bring it to the next agenda, make sure we catch up.
Great, thank you. Uh, continue the roll call.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, so would someone like to introduce a resolution to defer the, um, consideration of the balance of the resolution of R four? Actually, R three, excuse me.
Introduced.
Okay, it's been introduced.
I think it would be a motion to defer if we need to do that.
Move to defer. Move to defer the balance of the state legislative program.
Okay, and, uh, do you have a second? I think Commissioner Herbst said second, okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the balance of that resolution was deferred to, uh, the next meeting, which is?
November twenty-one.
November twenty-one, thank you. You're welcome. So R four, resolution closing the Capital Reserve created via Resolution twenty-one-dash-one-ninety-seven for the city's water and sewer system. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, closing the Capital Reserve created via Resolution number twenty-one-dash-one-ninety-seven for the city's water and sewer system and providing for an effective date. Commissioners Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, R four is now approved. R five, a resolution declaring notice of intent to lease city-owned property located at six oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter to the Marine Industries Association of South Florida. I have two people sign up to speak, but for questions only. Um, someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent to lease property located at six oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-one-six to Marine Industries Association of South Florida Inc., a Florida not-for-profit corporation pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter, providing notice of a public hearing before the City Commission at six PM on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, for consideration of the terms and conditions, and to authorize execution of the instruments by the proper city officials, providing for an effective date. Commissioners Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R five is now approved. R six, uh, resolution declaring notice of intent to sublease, uh, city-owned property located at five oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter to the International Swimming Hall of Fame, Inc. Um, no one has signed up to speak? There are no questions, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Introduced.
R six has been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent to sublease property located at five oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-one-six to International Swimming Hall of Fame, Inc., pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter, providing notice of a public hearing before the City Commission at six PM on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, consider, for consideration of the terms and conditions and to authorize execution of the instruments by the proper city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioners Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R six is approved. R seven, this is a resolution declaring notice of intent to sublease city-owned property located at five oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, uh, three-three-three-one-six pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter to, uh, the International Swimming Hall of Fame Properties, Inc. No one has signed up to speak? Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
So anyone have any questions? I'm sorry?
I guess he's asking what we're, which?
R seven, R seven, yeah. Okay. Um, it's been introduced, any questions? Please call the roll.
A resolution, City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, providing notice of intent to sublease property located at five oh one Seabreeze Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, three-three-three-one-six to Ishoff Properties, Inc., pursuant to Section eight-point-one-three of the City Charter, providing notice of a public hearing before the City Commission at six PM on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, for consideration of the terms and conditions to authorize execution of the instruments by the proper city officials and providing for an effective date. Commissioners Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R seven is now approved. R eight, City Auditor Annual Performance Review. How should we begin this conversation?
Um, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, uh, there was a request for this to be deferred.
Ah, did I see it somewhere?
I didn't see that.
Okay, there's a request for it to be deferred?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I know I made a request for it to be deferred.
Did you, okay.
I did.
Okay, so can I have a motion to defer?
Please, motion to defer.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, to what date? Usually have to have a date, like the next meeting, maybe?
Well, I asked for the referral because, um...
No, to what date, we have to?
I, I understand, but I want to explain why I asked for the referral.
Okay.
Um, determining for a, a true evaluation process for all the charter officers, so I don't want to give a date and we don't have a policy in place. So, um, how long would it take to get that process in place for all the charter officers? That's what we...
Well, here's, here's my thought, Mr.
What are your thoughts, Mr.?
Mayor, can I, for a second?
Go ahead.
My thought was, I thought we were going to, in, in conference, talk about the process to evaluate the city manager and at the same time, talk about the process that we're going to evaluate all the charter order officers. I think what we're going to need to do is have a, in conference, go through the criteria, the matrix we're going to use, and how we're going to go through that process. So the evaluation would have to be the meeting after that. So it is going to, it's going to be a two-meeting process. Pam, is that the same thought that you had?
I hadn't come to a conclusion of two, but definitely a conversation of how we would strategize and organize that evaluation process, having that discussion where it was unified over, over the opportunity to review all the charter officers.
All right, so with that in mind.
Mayor, could I just weigh in? I just want to offer my two cents on that.
Okay.
So I, I know that Commissioner Thurman had made a recommendation regarding the use of the ICMA guidelines, which then Mr. Solomon disseminated to all of us. So I have been utilizing that format. I found it to be a good one. I've already had my review with the city manager. I had my review with the city auditor using both of those guidelines. I know that the city attorney's office has also proffered something which I have not yet had an opportunity to review. But again, I, I thought those were good tools. So just for anybody else that would like to look at them, I thought they provided a good foundation. We could always tweak them going forward if we want to add more or take things away. But I think for right now, to move everything forward, I suggest everybody take a look at them because I thought they were good. And thank you, Dr. Thurman, for sharing those.
Well, it was Dr. Thurman that actually recommended that methodology, so.
Yeah, I moved forward with it. I thought it was a good one, sir.
Right, so did you take the opportunity to meet with any of these, any of these folks? The city, the auditor or the city manager?
Well, we, I'd like to, at least in conference, have the process about what, no, we all adopt that. We, we looked at it. We haven't actually said we're going to adopt that. So I think that we should, in conference, adopt it, say we're going to do this, the process, and then the next meeting, we'll go ahead and vote. That's my thought.
All right, Greg, Greg, refresh my memory. When did, what time of day on the twenty first did we say we were going to have the discussion regarding the tunnel? Was it in the afternoon?
One thirty.
What time?
One thirty.
One thirty, so it's going to be, see, I'm afraid that if we decide to add this as a conference agenda item, we may not get to it.
So we start at one? Start at one, spend twenty minutes talking about this and move on? I don't think this is going to be a very lengthy conversation.
Right. Okay, well, we might as well, okay, why don't we do that? All right, if you don't mind. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
May? I just had a question.
Wait a minute, let me.
Okay, no problem.
Let me get a consensus on this. We're good at that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm not necessarily good, but that's okay.
Okay, very good. Go ahead, Commissioner Glassman.
Thank you. So I, I know that there's a lot of discussion. I know that at the last commission meeting, we had an agenda item to do the performance review for our city manager. That was deferred, so actually, I was quite surprised when I saw this agenda. It only had the item for the annual performance review for the city auditor. So I was wondering, well, what happened to the city manager? Why, that was the one that was last week, and that's already late. So that just seems to have fallen off the radar when this one came forward. I don't remember the exact timeline for the other charter officers, but.
So if we have the, if we have a meeting at one o'clock at the next meeting on the twenty first to finalize the standards that by which we're going to review our charter officers, then at the following meeting, we could make a decision regarding their performance review.
Right, but let me just say this, for, in the sake of fairness, for instance, our city clerk, David, when, when was your performance review done?
January of this year? So it would be, my next one would be January of next year.
So you were January of twenty twenty-three?
Mm-hmm.
Did we have any kind of matrix or did we have any kind of ICMA discussion by any of the commission about, oh, my gosh, we need to have a, a policy or a matrix?
No.
No, why not?
Is that a question for me?
No, I'm just asking. No, I'm, 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 I'm asking my colleagues why it was not an issue.
Because the issue came up with, the issue came up with regard to the city manager's position.
Uh-huh.
And, and therefore, we decided collectively that we would establish a standard.
Yes.
And so, and that's what we're planning to do.
Okay, so again.
We also said, we also said.
Well, if I could add to that too, Mayor.
We also said that any, any, if we did make any adjustments to their salary, if we ever increases, they would be retroactive.
Mayor, if I could add to that too?
Yes, please.
Because when this, when, when Commissioner Thurman brought this up, which I think is actually a, a good approach, I think it put some structure and formalizes a process that had been, you know, somewhat abstract before. The city manager requested that we look at the other charter officers the same way, and I know I was agreeable to that because I think it's a good idea. So, you know, I think to your question, Commissioner Glassman, is this is a prospective-looking improvement to our process. And I think it's consistent with what the city manager has asked us to, to do with regards to the other charter officers.
Yeah, and I think it gives us some structure. It gives us some structure. I agree with you.
Mayor and commission, I'm advised that under the charter, excuse me, and code of ordinances, the special, the conference meeting must start at one thirty, so you could call what you propose.
Special meeting.
Exactly. Exactly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, again, my point is just that we did not do that this year for the city clerk, and I want all of our charter officers to be treated equally and fairly. So I don't know why you just decide in, you know, in October, November, December, that you're going to all of a sudden do something differently that you had not done that way for the year. I'm just, again, saying that I'm just, I want to see everybody treated equally and fairly and, and especially if we're going to do this for the city auditor, we have to move forward with the city manager. I understand what you're saying about, we'll do everything retroactively, but I still don't want to, you know, hold everything up in terms of people's annual performance review. So when we have a meeting to talk about a process or a matrix or whatever it is we're going to follow, I would ask the city attorney, is that something, how does that actually happen in terms of a requirement? Does that have to be a resolution, an ordinance? Are we obligated to, to fill something out and sign something? Or how is this going to work?
Are you talking about these forms that you're going to fill out for reviewing people?
Yes, I, I. But the policy, well, the policy itself, if we, if we have a conference meeting, we can't vote on anything because it's a conference meeting.
Right.
So that would have to go to an evening meeting. And then would this review of our charter officers take the form of a resolution, an ordinance? What, what form would that take?
I'm, I'm not sure I would know the answer to that yet, and I'd have to look it up. But one, the one thing I need to talk about with you is that you have for all the charter officers, this matrix that you've all looked at and agreed upon before you even do any of that, right? So it would defer the manager, defer the auditor, until you've all done what Dr. Thurman proposes, which I don't think you can do in twenty minutes, for all the other charter officers. And then I'll have an answer for the next meeting, but I'm not sure.
Okay, again, I'm, I'm just looking for, I'm just looking for consistency, and I'm looking to see what exactly is that we have to pass as a commission to initiate this kind of a process, resolution, ordinance, whatever. But then I, I just want to know, that process going forward, is it okay to, all of a sudden, in the same year where you have not done that for other charter officers, then institute that policy for remaining charter officers, even though you have not done that this year for any other charter officer?
If you've, if you've never done this before, I'd recommend at least doing it by a motion, because if nothing is prescribed for it, I'm not familiar with it, I think a motion would suffice. But again, I think you all need to see all the different forms, attorney, clerk, manager, and so you've all approved the forms as to what's in there. I think you're going to end up doctoring them before you end up approving or talking about what they've gone through. Let me, let me throw this out, if I may. So there's more than one way to kind of skin this cat, right? So first of all, to your question, Commissioner Glassman, about adopting something, as, as the attorney just pointed out, we wouldn't be doing this at the conference meeting. We would be doing this at a special meeting, so we can take action at a special meeting. So if we call a one o'clock special meeting, we can take action at a special meeting. So that resolves that issue. The other issue is whether or not we want to create this as a commission policy where this is our stated preference for how we go about doing it? Or do we want to codify this and, you know, adopt an ordinance that says, this is how we shall do this, in which case it becomes obligatory on all of us to do that going forward? Maybe that's something we need to talk about.
Until we change it.
Well, until we change it, but, you know, we, we may, look, at, at, at any given point in time, you may decide that this is a policy that you don't want to do it that way. And that is, as long as it's a policy, perfectly within the right of every elected official to decide how they want to go about conducting business. If we codify this as an ordinance, then we have an obligation to follow through on it. So I think maybe we need to talk about that and decide that. I'm fine with it either way, it doesn't matter to me. But I'm just saying, you, you all need to decide how much restraint do you want to put on our behavior now and going forward? And if I may, just one last thing, I apologize, Mayor.
Sorry.
Because, no, because I think this is important also to address Commissioner Glassman's concern about how we're doing this. Anytime we make a change, it's always going to be prospective. So we have to draw a line in the sand, and there's always going to be, this happened before, this happens now. It's inherently unfair to the last guy or the next guy, but there's no way around that. So I think what we're saying is, we've looked at our process, we found our process to be found wanting, and we're going to improve it going forward in a way that provides more clarity, transparency, and structure to what we're doing. Whether we did that for the city clerk or not, I, I don't think is relevant to how we want to proceed going forward.
No, and I understand that, and I appreciate that. I do find it relevant, though. So again, I would want a time certain out in the future. I just don't think that in the same year, people should be evaluated in a different way. Again, I, I.
What time of year is, is it best for us?
Well, again, I, and again, I don't even know if I am comfortable myself because I don't know what we're actually talking about in terms of what we're going to do. I was ready to do a performance review for the city manager at our last meeting. It was on the agenda. I met with the city auditor in advance of tonight. I was ready to do my performance review for the city auditor, which was on the agenda for tonight. Obviously, I'm in the minority because other people are looking for other mechanisms, they're looking for other ways to do this. I'm not sure I will ever agree with that. I think this is a personal decision for each city commissioner and the mayor to decide how they want to conduct a performance review of our charter officers. I don't feel like I want to be corralled into having to do it just one way. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay.
Well, let me, let me say this. I took this oath on December sixth. I came in and I'm, I'm in this position and doing and holding up to my responsibilities. However, there was no guidelines for this. So this is the reason why I'm asking for guidelines. I need to have an understanding of a benchmark, what we're doing. Yes, I, I've been working alongside our city manager, also with the auditor. I know the things that have been asked of them, the things that have been accomplished, but yet, how's, with us evaluating, what are the depths of the evaluation? Are we, is it just, okay, they showed up for work, they showed up for a meeting? Boom, that's the answer. But my question is, we need a guideline and something to follow that is unified and consistent across the board. And then you have that space where you can add and elaborate where you think that person has gone above and beyond, you add that to it. But just to say, evaluate someone, once some person may be shallow with their evaluation, someone may go deep. So that's why I'm requiring and asking for this type of evaluation.
And I understand that a hundred percent. No, I, no, Mayor, that's okay. And I, I respect that opinion. I, I really do. But then I think it's incumbent upon us. When I did interview with the city attorney, I looked at his report that he put together for us, and I also looked at the instructions that we did get from the ICMA. So there are ways that each of us can go about looking at everything from, you know, performance category scoring, ICMA criteria, relations, you know, with the governing board, professional skill, status, functions of the agency.
Consistency.
No, I understand, but.
It's consistency because.
It's not just consistency, it's transparency, allowing the, allowing the individual candidate to know what's expected of them through a standardized process. I think that's what's really what we, what we need to think about.
Yes, I thank you for saying that.
Right, no, and I, I appreciate that. And, but again, I think I would probably prefer to have that as a guideline. I don't know if I want to be obligated to just go along with a system that I, well, first of all, I haven't seen it yet.
Well, you don't have to.
Right.
You don't have to, but they have to.
I understand.
They have to, not you. You, you can use other criteria. You can, you can, but I do think, look, we, we spent a lot of time on this, let's just have our special meeting, we can make that decision then, we can put together our arguments then, and we'll make a decision then. I think that's the best thing we should do.
And I just want to clarify, the special meeting, depending on, no matter what time it is of the day, our charter allows it to be a meeting where we actually can vote?
In a special meeting, yes.
No matter what time of the day?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
All righty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Would you want me to weigh in on this, too?
If you wish to.
Bring it home.
I agree.
All right.
I wish you would stop taking up our time, Commissioner.
Really? My thoughts are the same.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, so what are we doing here? So we are going to defer this, right? And do we need a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Do we need a time certain, Mr. City Attorney?
Is that what you've always done when you have a?
Well, we usually have, if we defer.
If that's what the practice has been, I would say yes. Otherwise, I would say you could withdraw it and not worry about it.
So you want to defer to, defer to a future meeting?
I would, I would say withdraw it.
Okay, so I, I will, I will remove my.
Okay, we'll withdraw it then.
I've removed my motion to.
Just withdraw it.
I would, no, you have to second that, but I have to remove my motion to defer, and please have put in a motion to.
No, we could just allow it to be withdrawn.
It'll just be a withdrawal.
We don't have to.
It doesn't require action.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Let's move on to public hearing one. What, what, what? Is that a motion or are we just?
No, we're just withdrawing the item.
We're just withdrawing?
Yeah.
We don't have to vote on a withdrawal?
No, we don't.
Okay.
Okay. Public hearing, quasi-judicial resolution approving a waiver of limitations at eight thirty northeast twentieth Avenue for the installation of one finger pier and one boatlift. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them part of the record. I have a couple of people who have signed up, but just, let me see, it's just for questions. Nope. Roseanne Lovell and John De Torres. Is Roseanne here? John, you're here? Is Roseanne here? Want to come up? Okay. And John? You, you checked yes, then you checked no? No, you have to push the button. No, on the, on the speaker box, on the speaker box.
Press, where it says press here, it's pretty obvious. I didn't see it.
It was your question.
Well, we own a unit at 2761 Northeast 14th Street, and it's, it's a...
Wait, 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 wait. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Stop for just a second. Any disclosures, Commissioner Herbst?
None.
Commit Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, I met with Tyler Chappelle and Perry Stamos on November 6, 2023.
Okay. And Commissioner Starman?
None.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I overlooked that. Okay, you can start from the beginning now. Please, please proceed.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Um, we own 2761 Northeast 14th Street in Fort Lauderdale. And, you know, they built the building next door, which is...
Just tell them it's the next item.
It's the next item.
Oh, you're not on this item.
Sorry about that.
Okay, wrong item. Okay. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? All right. There being none, would someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Anyone wish to speak on this item? Okay. Let me put you in this next pile. All right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced. Please call the roll.
Just one quick thing before, just to clarify, I think Marine Advisory was a unanimous yes on this one, if I'm not mistaken?
I believe it was.
Yes, 11-0.
11 to 0.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman, that's for approval.
Yes, for approval.
Thank you. A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Section 47-19.3 of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations to permit applicant Susan T. Gaddis installation of one finger pier extending 63 feet plus or minus, and one boat lift extending 48 feet plus or minus, both extending into the adjacent waters of the Middle River, such property being associated with the principal building located at 830 Northeast 20th Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33304, and more particularly described below, subject to certain terms and conditions, repealing any and all parts of resolutions and conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and PH1 is approved. Now, just wait a second, just wait a second. Public hearing, quasi judicial resolution approving a waiver of limitations at 2765 Northeast 14th Street, Unit 32, Porto, Porto Venezia condominium for the installation of one boat lift. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioners, Herbst, do you have any disclosures?
No.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
Met with Tyler Chappelle on November 6, 2023.
November 6, that was like yesterday?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, just being more specific than just saying yesterday for the minutes, it's good to have the exact date.
Good for you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sturman?
You're so precise. I, um, none.
None, okay. All right, Mr. Torres, you're the only one who signed up to speak.
Were you to swear, man?
Yes, I was sworn in.
He was sworn, that's why he has a little sticker.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what that means.
Thank you.
Yeah. Did you not know that?
Yeah.
If you swear, if you're going to testify, you have to swear that you love Fort Lauderdale.
Well, anyway.
Okay.
Please proceed. We own a unit at 2761 Northeast 14th Street, and the problem with the boat lift here is this boat lift proposed is going to be six foot longer than the previous boat lift that was there, at least six foot longer. So the line of sight from where we get to see the little bit of intercoastal left is going to be zero at this point. Because the, and the gentleman in the 2759 lives in Chicago, he was not notified. He, because he had, I guess, his mail goes all to the 2750, 59 Northeast 14th Street. He's also opposed. But it's, it really is going to greatly impact the little bit of intercoastal view we have left, and I don't think that's right. I'm not opposed to a boat lift, what I'm opposed is to the six foot additional boat lift.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Commissioner Glassman, this is your district, right? Oh, no, it's District 1, that's right.
No, the other one, the other one was.
The other one was. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any comments on this? So I've gotten a number of emails objecting to this one, so I, I'd just like to hear from staff on this one. How did the Marine Advisory Board?
12 to 0 to support it.
12 to 0 to support it?
Yep.
That's correct. Yes.
So what was, so obviously 12 to 0 support, what was the tone of the conversation? Were there any objections that were raised during the, you know, during the discussion with the Marine Advisory Board?
No, it's important to note that the Marine Advisory Board does not look at line of sight issues, they look at navigational impacts. So they, they were not concerned with any of the navigational potential impacts.
So it's, 25 feet is permitted, right? And this is six feet beyond 25 feet, right?
Correct, yes.
So it's a total of 31 feet.
Yes.
But Mayor, I mean, if we're going to look at history, especially surrounding area, you, you see waivers from 40 feet to 487 feet. So six feet is quite a small number.
It's a different street.
Well, doesn't matter what street it is, I'm just saying the surrounding area, the, the waivers range from 40 feet to 487 feet. So what is six feet?
Well, that was 33 years ago, before we were more circumspect. Well, again, it's six feet, you're right.
It's six feet. I mean, we've seen waivers that, my gosh, would blow six feet out of the water, no pun intended.
And if I may, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Tyler Chappelle, this is Chappelle Group, 714 East McNabb. Just to clarify, just a couple things, too, is this is, this slip has an existing lift in it, so we're replacing the lift with a new lift, and by doing that, it requires us to move the lift waterward by the six feet to accommodate a new vessel that the owner is purchasing, which is a 30-foot Chris Craft. And I would also add that the neighboring property to the west, this gentleman lives at, he's the last unit, has two substantial live oak trees in the corner, as well as a palm tree, so I'm not sure there's a line of sight issue. But we would request your approval, and we are the first, this is the first we're hearing of any complaint from a neighbor as of today, so we certainly wouldn't have had this issue brought to us. But again, the Marine Advisory Board clarified that this is only six feet, it's consistent with other waivers, and there is no line of sight when it's taken into consideration, and I'm not sure there is due to the vegetation that's located at the property.
Did we recently approve another neighbor for a, for a waiver in the same...
Yes.
Complex?
Yes. I, I believe so, yes. That's probably in the backup as one of the examples.
Okay. Um, all right, hold on a second. Where was that list that you pointed out, Commissioner?
Well, I think, I think you may have been referring to the 20th Avenue item, the previous public hearing item?
No, I'm not referring to that.
No.
Which was, which was that, which exhibit had that list of, of dock waivers?
It wasn't necessarily listed, but it was in the, actually, I was reading from the minutes of the Marine Advisory Board, October 5, 2023, but we do have in the backup a letter from the condominium association.
May I ask, does the city ever send somebody out to the sites to see what the effect would be in person?
Well, to Mr. Chappelle's comment, you know, we don't, we don't normally assess views as much as we assess navigational safety.
No, I realize that, but when you buy a unit, as we did years ago, and we had, you know, of course, the building wasn't there, and the building is a nice-looking building. But, I mean, it, when you buy a unit, it's almost like you bought a unit with a view, and then all of a sudden, you don't have the view. And that's why I was wondering if the city ever sends an independent or out there to see what we're talking about in person, because there's nothing like seeing something in person than trying to vote on it and see it with just a decision of how you view it without seeing it in person. Because then you say, well, you know what, he's got a point.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else wish to speak on this item?
I have a question. How long have you lived in your unit? How long have you been a resident in your unit?
Um, we've owned the unit since, I think, 2006. We, I live in Hollywood, Florida, and we rent the unit out, and it's a beautiful unit. I've, I've actually been a businessman in the area for 47 years.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. If there's no one else wishing to speak on this, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Mayor, we have to close the public hearing.
Uh, hey, you know what? That's not a bad idea. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
It's been introduced.
And that's for approval?
For approval. Please call the roll.
A resolution in the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Section 47-19.3 of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations to permit the applicant Anita Blumstein as trustee of the Anita Blumstein Revocable Trust installation of one boat lift extending a distance of 31 feet plus or minus from the applicant's property line into the adjacent waters of the Rio Encarnado Canal located at 2765 Northeast 14th Street, Number 32, Fort Lauderdale, Florida 33304, and more more particular described below, subject to terms and conditions repealing any and all parts of resolutions and conflict herewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
No.
Mayor Trentos?
Yes, and the resolution is approved. Moving on to OFR 1, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Chapter 8, Article 3, titled Public Beaches by creating a new code, Section 8-55.4, titled Sale, Service, and Consumption of Food and Alcoholic Beverages. We have one person sign up to speak, Mr. Brown. Are you here on behalf of the Central Beach Alliance?
If you're filling out my performance evaluation, yes. Just had to have a little humor this late at night. Bill Brown, President of the Central Beach Alliance, Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, I come before you as a President of the Central Beach. We are in support of this ordinance. We, I first want to commend the hoteliers, the Chamber Beach Council, and the Central Beach Board of Directors. We've collaboratively all monitored this trial period for one year. We have no, had received no complaints of any problems as a result of this. We did do a survey, we had two of our membership members respond back to the survey, one that said, well, it's going to create more homeless because of serving alcohol on the beach, which we, we just kind of realized that you're always going to have one or two that's upset. We do support going to Oakland Park, expanding the district for the hotels that are along the beach between Sunrise and Oakland Park, providing that they still have a beach service system in place, either through the vendor, or their hotel has umbrellas and chairs that they, they utilize, similar to what all the other major hoteliers of the, I believe, eight that have applied this past year, same guidelines, same permitting process. And then we did reach out, working with city staff, and we agreed that they're going to add language into the Parks Department agreement, that there'll be no, for, for the ones that have the shelters or the serving areas, kind of like a, a tiki bar, but it's, as you saw in the back of material, it's a very nice shack, there'll be no alcohol stored or food stored overnight. That way it'll eliminate vandalism or any concerns for rodent control or anything like that. So we, we support this, and hopefully, as, if the amendment or changes goes through to Oakland Park, we support. However, if there's any discussion beyond the Oakland Park district boundaries, then we would ask that it pass first reading, because we heard late yesterday and today that there might be some discussion on North Beach Village, Villages, the smaller hotels. So I don't know where that stands, and Chris Cooper from city staff might have additional information.
All right, well, tonight, tonight, we're just, we're just looking at this geographical area. If, if at some point it's been proposed to the commission to expand it, we can certainly review it at that time, but tonight, we're just looking at this particular ordinance.
Right, and that's what we support.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
No one else to sign up to speak?
Oh, and Bill, before you, Bill?
Wait, hold on, I'm not, oh, you want to talk to Bill? Bill?
Oh, yeah, that's, any negative from your community, or is it, is it like widely supported by your...
I heard the, the drinks were too weak.
I mean, is it, is it like significant?
There was only two, two comments of the survey.
And you've heard, and you've...
And we heard no complaints, and I, and just for transparency, the one comment was it was going to increase homeless, as I mentioned, and the other comment was, one of the members felt that having a, a two-tiered system where hotels can serve alcohol, but that individual as a resident couldn't consume alcohol on the beach, which we all know that that happens occasionally, and it's never been a problem, but he just felt like he's waiting, if he ever got arrested for, for drinking on the beach, then he would address it to legal action. But overall, we were surprised that, basically, it's, it's really 99% of our membership that's 99-plus percent in support, and no comments, no negative impacts the past year.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Brown? There being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'd like to introduce it, but Mayor, I did have a question, just to clarify something.
Yes, sir.
I want to find out from Chris, is this being amended at all to include the Oakland Park, up to Oakland Park? And by the way, that's just, as far as I know, two properties on the sand, the Sun Tower and the Pelican Grand. But are we doing that tonight, or are we not doing that tonight?
That is in the draft of the ordinance that's attached to this, so it would extend that northern boundary from Sunrise to Oakland Park. North of that's the beaches, not city-maintained beach.
Right.
But south of that, there are Pelican Grand and I think maybe one other hotel in that area.
The Sun Tower.
Right, right.
Where is that, where is that in the ordinance?
If you look at the definition of, I think it's Upland Hotel.
Yeah, I see it now.
It, it lists out the boundaries for the areas that those, that, that that contemplates.
Right, so we're extending it?
So we are including it up to Oakland Park?
Yes, we are, that's, that's why I wanted to make sure you...
Thank you, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
My pleasure. I wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
I misread that, okay.
And, because that is going to do that, but again, it's only those two properties. And then city manager on page 2 of 2 of the CAM on the top paragraph, Bill Brown represents the Central Beach Alliance. The language says Central Beach Civic Association, that's an incorrect name for that group.
We will update that CAM for the record.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for making that clarification. Okay, any other further comments or questions?
Mayor, I do have a comment, actually. So when we discussed this previously, I, I was actually the one who was advocating on behalf of the North Beach Village area, and I remember the discussion at the time was that we were doing this as a pilot project, and we'd have an opportunity to bring that back when we reconsidered it, and I think this is that opportunity. So I brought this up when I talked to staff, and the conversation was that we could amend it between first read and second read. So I, I definitely want to have that conversation again. I think that including Parr Sanders Hotels over there in North Beach Village is certainly appropriate. He's been a, a great business owner and operator in our city, and I think, I think including his facilities in this is something that we talked about last time. Again, we said we would revisit it this time around, and so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity between first and second read to consider that.
All right, so...
Mayor?
Wait a minute, before you, before you go, so, page 2, definitions. Hotel means any unit or group of units with 25 or more guests. So are you trying to address a situation where there are 25 or less guests? What, how, how are we not including him?
Well, they're not included because they're not on the sand.
They're not on A1A.
Basically, sorry. So this, this would extend it back to, to...
How would that work? How do you get, how, if you're, if you're like on Bay Shore Drive, and, you know, and you want, you want, you know, beach service, how do you get a cocktail from Bay Shore Drive to the beach? I don't, I don't want you to answer that, I want, I want, you know, just a rhetorical question, I guess, at this point. So between this reading and the next reading, we'll flush that out.
Let's have that, right, exactly. I want to have that conversation.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that's enough time, Mayor, and I'll tell you why. This was a topic of conversation at my district pre-agenda meeting last evening, and Commissioner Herbst is correct, we did say that we wanted to have that discussion, but depending on when this is coming back for second reading, I don't think there's enough time for the Central Beach Alliance to have that kind of conversation about the projects west of A1A all the way to the intercoastal. Concerns that were expressed last night were exactly that, what you just said, Mayor, how does that happen? Are we all, all of a sudden going to have, you know, like Uber Eats and DoorDash, and how are they getting across A1A, how are they getting all the way from intercoastal? There, there are a lot of questions that makes it different, because they also don't have the beach service, the chair service that all of these hotels have for the contracts. So that's not going to be a conversation that I think that we can properly have before the second reading.
Okay, well, the, the, the issue tonight is whether or not to approve the ordinance as written. What happens between now and the next reading, we'll leave it up to whomever, and bring that back at that time. But tonight is not the time really to discuss what's going to happen at the second reading. The second reading is, is the night where we discuss that. So tonight, right?
And I, I agree, Mayor, I just, I just want to get that out on the floor. What we're really talking about is up to Breakers, and to your question or comment, Commissioner, we still have them running across A1A, whether they're coming from...
Yeah.
Whether they're coming from Breakers Avenue, or whether they're coming from the Hilton, they're still running across A1A. they're still running across A1A. So I don't, I don't think that, that part's relevant. But I do think there are other questions that you raise that are worth exploring. And certainly, I'd like to have that conversation. And I'm hoping we can get that done between first and second read.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about how that gets vetted with the neighborhood association, which was very instrumental in the vetting of this original ordinance.
Let them, let them figure that out.
Okay. I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. Everyone likes to throw stuff out there. I'm throwing it out there.
Well, you know what I would suggest is, last year, we said when we were going to do this, that we were going to do as a pilot project. So I'm going to say if, we can do the same thing. We can include up to Breakers Avenue as a pilot project. If it doesn't work out, we could always revisit it again.
Exactly. Okay. All right. Very good. Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Can I have a comment now, too?
Yeah, I'm looking at you.
Okay. Can I have Police Chief come down? Bill Schultz, is he here?
I don't know if he's still here.
He had to attend a lineup right now?
Oh, my goodness.
But he is still alive.
He is great and alive, yes.
Good. Thank you.
Well, I could have fired also.
Is there a question you, you would like to post?
No, I'm just going to have him come up. Of course, yeah. And I will ask him in a second. Well, I can ask you, Greg, and fire. Have you noticed any difference in a couple things? Number one, any, now that there's, quote, alcohol on the beach, any issues as far as arrests or any disturbance?
No, no public safety concerns. We checked that.
Any medical problems, people?
None.
Okay. And trash? Any issues with trash or?
I'll ask Carl Williams, Director of Parks, to, to chime in, but we have not. If, if we would have, we would have been raising that with you all.
The hotels are pretty, pretty good at that.
I would imagine, I would imagine if anything, it's probably an improvement is what I would get.
I will tell you that my office has not received one complaint in the year that we've had this program. And I think the hotels have behaved admirably. Everyone has been really responsible in terms of implementing this, this policy. So I want to say thank you to all of those folks for doing that because it really has made this a success. And again, we ask all the time, people say, no, everything's fine. People, and trust me, if there were issues, we would hear it. So no one shy about expressing those concerns or issues in District Two, especially on the beach. So I would just say that, you know, thank you to everyone involved in this because this has been a really good program. Thank you.
Okay. The ordinance has been introduced. Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor, can I, can I make one comment before we go through with that?
Sure.
So I, I would like to say, so we brought this back to you tonight because the pilot program did expire. And, and I think the folks that do participate were hoping to get this renewed.
We are. We get, we get.
So, but what I want to say is that, you know, we should have put the work in, in the interim to look at that North Beach Village. I've, I've talked with the representative from, primary property owner in that area, as well as the Central Beach President. And, you know, I think the time to come back in second reading on the 21st is a bit short. But I think between those two parties, we're in agreement that if we adopt this on second reading on the 21st, give us 60 days to come back with the plan for North Beach Village, that they're all in agreement with that as a pathboard. If the Commissioner is supportive of that, we, we can certainly make that happen. But with a commitment to come back in 60 days.
Well, that doesn't have to be part of the ord, the resolution. No.
No. But I just want to clear direction before we came back on second reading.
Okay. All right. There being no further comment, the ordinance has been introduced, Mr. Clerk. Is that correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So please call the roll.
In ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, mending Chapter Eight, Article Three of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, titled Public Beaches by creating a new code section eight dash 55.4 titled sale, service, and consumption of food and alcoholic beverages to allow hotel owners and operators to sell, serve, and deliver food and alcoholic beverages on the public beach for consumption by hotel guests or any person renting a beach share from a city-approved beach concessionaire and providing for definitions, providing for regulations and penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, and providing for correction of scrivener errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Chantel.
Yes. And the ordinance is now approved on first reading. We now move to OFR Two. This is the first reading of an ordinance establishing the Bahia Mar Community Development District and authorizing the city manager to execute related instruments. We have several people who've signed up to speak. Ginger Wald. Hi, Ginger. And Kenny Tate and Jimmy Tate just for questions. So Ginger, did you want to speak tonight?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm actually here to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Oh, you're just here for questions? Okay.
Yes. So, and I, and if you have anything, I'm more than happy to answer. This is just first reading, not the public hearing, which we know is going to be a little different.
I do have questions, but let's start with the Commissioners. Commissioner Herbst, do you have any questions?
I almost can't pass up the opportunity to grill Ginger, but I know she'd beat me into submission, so no.
Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Glassman?
All good. Thank you.
And Commissioner Sturman?
Okay, nothing.
You have none. Okay. I have a few questions.
Yes.
Okay. So the purpose of this is to basically, to establish a tax, a self-taxing district, essentially, right?
Yes.
They're going to impose, they're going to, so what is the, what are the geographical boundaries of this?
The geographical boundaries are within your petition. If you look at the petition, which is your backup to the agenda.
Right.
You will specifically see, I believe it is Exhibit Two, provides the meets and bounds and the legal sketch of the boundaries.
Right. But since I can't interpret league, meets and bounds, give us, give us a thumbnail approach.
Yeah. That's what legally is provided.
Yeah.
The meet, the, the legal, the boundaries of the proposed CDD is mainly what you have now in Bahia Mar. There are some areas that are being excluded as to the entire, what I call the entire site of Bahia Mar.
Right. So does the, does the, do the geographical boundaries include the open space area being retained by the city?
Yes.
Okay. So the city is still going to be a stakeholder or property owner within the boundaries of the, of the CDD, correct?
Yes.
So are they going to be subject to this self-improvement tax?
No. First of all, it's not a self-improvement tax. A Community Development District is an independent special purpose district. And it does have the power to levy special assessments, similar to a city can levy special assessments. But there is specifically an exclusion for governmental entities that own property within and use it for those public purposes are excluded from those special assessments.
Okay. So anything that the city owns, they would not be assessed?
For the, the city would not be assessed. That is correct.
Okay. So there's been some conversation about the sale of air rights as part of the property. And, and, and with the retention of the first floor of the footprint upon which the, these, from which these air rights would be, would be sold. Those two would be excluded, correct?
Well, it, again, it, it depends how it's done. So I know we have had discussions in regards to preliminary discussions, it's not in front of the city commission yet, but discussions in regards to conveyance of those air rights.
Right.
The air rights themselves, as to the public portions, no. The assessments are not going to be, the special assessments will not be levied onto the owner, for instance. I'll give you an example. I have a Community Development District down in city of Miami. In the city of Miami, it's Sawyer's Landing CDD. It is a one vertical unit construction. There are multiple levels of a parking garage that are owned and operated by the CDD. Those are not actually assessed back to the governmental entity, which is the CDD.
Is that because the governmental entity retained ownership?
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Correct.
All right. So now, because the government entity will not be part of the assessment, but they still will be within the geographical area of the CDD, would they be entitled to membership on the governing board?
Well, no. They are not a per se landowner as defined under Chapter 190. There is a specific exclusion for governmental entity as a landowner therein. That's just the way that the statute is written. There are other landowners that would have the ability to sit on the Board of Supervisors, and that also is pursuant to a landowner's election. Right now, what you have is the five initial supervisors. And 90 days after establishment, there is a landowner's election in which landowners, and again, the definition is not the definition that you think as a landowner, such as me owning my home or you owning your home. And with that, those stakeholders, those individuals as to property owners would be able to cast their votes.
So if we're not, if we're not subject to assessment and we're not considered a landowner within the definition, why, why is the real estate owned by the city contained within the geographical area of the CDD?
Well, it's permissible. I mean, if you're going to proceed forward with the CDD being established and the CDD being able to fund certain public improvements, as opposed to the city funding those public improvements, then the CDD needs to have the ability to do so within the boundaries of itself.
So while the city won't be charged for them, they would necess, they could be imposed on the city?
No. No. The city, the special assessments cannot be.
Not the assessment, but the improvements?
No, no, no. The improvements can be financed by the CDD and constructed by the CDD and can still be city improvements.
Right. But can they be, can, is the city required to allow them to be put on city land if it's not part of the, the Board of Supervisors or it's not part of the taxing district? In other words?
Yes. I, I think I understand what you're saying.
Like, can they put park benches on city land if we don't, if we didn't pay for them?
Right. So the city, this is what we've done in the past. Cities and CDDs enter, enter interlocal agreements.
Right.
And in those, and I just did one in the city of Sunrise. And in those interlocal agreements, that is where it's delineated specifically as to what the city is going to expect of the CDD. And then it's still the city's property and what the city can do with it.
Okay. But the CDD supervise, Board of Supervisors can't tell the city what to do on their property?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Now, in this particular model, does the CDD include the promenade that's going to be around the peninsula that's intended to be built?
The promenade, yes.
Okay. So now, is there, so there's really no, other than just set up the structure, that's all we're voting on tonight, correct?
That is correct. The only thing you're voting on tonight is the first reading of the ordinance to just establish the CDD, actually create it.
Okay. And as, according to the rules, the, the developer will have the, the ability and the, and the, and the responsibility to populate the, the Board of Supervisors until units are sold to the individual homeowners, correct?
Basically, yes.
Yeah. Okay. That's kind of like any condominium association, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Okay. I think you've answered all my questions then.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions?
Mayor, I just had one question. I, I asked the city attorney's office, but I'm still, I don't have the answer. But Ginger, maybe you can help with this. This is my only question.
Sure.
If we look at the Exhibit Two, page 22 of 26, this is the statement of estimated regulatory costs.
What page?
Exhibit Two, page 22 of 26.
Okay. I have it.
3.0. So this talks about, you know, who needs to comply. But if you look at the paragraph, I just have one question here. As noted above, the development described herein is an anticipated planned community design for up to 350 residential condominium units, 60 hotel condominium units, a 256 key hotel, 88,000 square feet of retail and commercial uses, public improvements and related facilities, amenities, and service areas. Formation of the district would put most of these unit owners, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So when it says most, what would not be included there? Why does it say most of these unit owners, occupants, businesses under the jurisdiction of the district? Who would be excluded?
The city.
Just the city?
Basically. And this, and this would be the city. The way that, and, and a statement of estimated regulatory cost is a requirement that we have to have as the Chapter 190 is pursuant to 120. It's not the best thing you have to do for a CDD, but it is something that has to be done. Specifically in this regard, once the district is established, then those residents, those businesses, unit owners, when condominiums are built, they would come under the jurisdiction of the CDD. Who would not? The city.
Just the city. So even though it's not specifically mentioned here, it would also include things like boat slips and docks?
The boat slips are not part of the CDD. That's on the exterior.
Okay. So that's not part of the CDD. Great.
That is correct.
Those are my only questions. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Just as a follow-up there, then, forgot my thought. Okay. Commissioner Sturman, did you want to say something?
I have, I have a couple of questions here.
Go ahead, Mr. Sturman.
And, Mr. City Manager, if you want to help with that, too. And I want to thank the Kates for being here also. But a couple of things. Number one, this is the first CDD we've ever had in the city of Fort Lauderdale, correct?
I can answer if you want me to. That is correct.
Okay. Number two, the mayor talked about air rights. And the length of the lease is, what, 100 years, correct?
It's, it's 50 years and then an extension of another 50.
50 plus 50, correct. The air rights, though, would, once the CDD is established, go to perpetuity? Is that correct?
Well, we have, we're not establishing air rights tonight. This is just the structure of the CDD.
Okay.
That's why I, that's why I was, I wanted to make that clear. That's a whole separate subject, Commissioner.
Okay. Things such as, and one of the purposes was is so that this, the city would not be responsible for the infrastructure underneath and the CDD will. And that's going to be a benefit to the city. Mr. Mayor, you might know this, or Mr. City Manager, it sounds like it's a great thing because now the city's not, not responsible for the infrastructure. But it was pointed out to me since I had met with them that the, with the agreement, we're not responsible now, are we? The develop, who is responsible right now without the CDD for the infrastructure on that project?
I'm going to ask Attorney Ginger to, to weigh in on that.
Well, I, I can't specifically answer that. I, I only answer to the, the CDD questions.
I can answer that. I'm not answering as your attorney, but in the com.
Sure.
Right. Let's have a, let's have a disclaimer there. Under the comprehensive agreement, we're not responsible for it.
Right. So we're not, it's, it looks like it's a great thing because we're not.
These are enhancements.
Okay.
These are like, these are like the goodies, the extra, you know, like we did with the bid, the Business Improvement District with the Hotel District. You know, this is, these are for the extras that they, I mean, there's still response, these, these condominiums are still going to have maintenance every month. They're still going to be subject to special assessments for any improvements, okay? This is another layer.
That is correct.
That may, they may be assessed should the CDD so, so decide. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. Okay. There's one other thought, a little concern here. And again, I just don't know much about CDD. This is new to me.
It's new to all of us.
Right. And I'm going to bring up, that's going to lead to my, my last question that I'm going to leave you with. Let's say, right now, the developer's responsible for infrastructure. Now, the CDD is going to be responsible once this is established. Down the line, if the CDD, for whatever reason, goes bankrupt or there's issues, does that now fall back to the city?
No.
Association.
Oh, but no, but we might, the city might be at risk.
Let me, can, can I elaborate a little, maybe assist you in, in the question that you're asked? Since the CDD is a local governmental entity, just like the city of Fort Lauderdale is a local governmental entity, bankruptcy, and I, I think it was 30 years ago, someone a little older, maybe Tom, the city attorney may remember this, when.
Oh.
Sorry.
Your first day on the job is she shaming you.
Sorry, sorry.
[laughing].
Well, I'm old, too.
But he's still alive.
There you go. City of Hollywood.
Let it go.
City of Hollywood had financial, financial problems, financial troubles. And City of Hollywood was able to pursue it to a statute, ask for assistance from the state. CDD would be able, be, be able to do the same thing. So when you're talking about the difference in regards to the CDD filing bankruptcy, the CDD would not be filing bankruptcy. The CDD could go to the state for, for, for assistance. And so that's, that's really the difference that you have with the CDD versus when you have with, let's say, a homeowners' association or a condominium association. CDD's main function is, is for that financing and then providing that those improvements and the maintenance of those public improvements in perpetuity. I represent CDDs throughout the state. Margaritaville, which everybody is, again, I'm using Hollywood. Don't tell anybody I'm talking about them. Margaritaville is a CDD. It's Hollywood Beach One CDD. And there are plenty of CDDs in Broward County. Tomorrow night, I'll be going to Tamarack for another CDD. So CDDs are not something that is unheard of. Most of the ones I do have are in Miami-Dade County. They've been utilizing for years. But they do exist through, throughout Broward County. In fact, total run in Coral Springs, I'll use Coral Springs now, has been a CDD for over 40 years.
Wow. Interesting. We also have things similar. I mean, when we do our budget every year, we have Sunrise Key here.
You do.
Where that neighborhood assesses itself for improvements.
That's essentially the same model.
The model's very similar.
Lauderdale harbors.
The, the water management. We have several of those that are similar, not quite CDDs, but.
It calms.
Yeah. The difference is you're not responsible for it.
Right.
The, those are dependent. This, this is an independent special taxing district.
Right. And I would say also, just to answer some of the questions I'm hearing, on Exhibit Two, page 24 of 26, there is a good chart that basically says Table One, Bahia Mar Community Development District Proposal, Facilities and Services. And you see the things that you're asking about, stormwater management system, water distribution system, sanitary sewer system. And you see who's responsible for operation and maintenance and who's responsible for ownership. It's all very much delineated there on page 24 of 26, Exhibit Two.
Give me one second, Commissioner. And there was, it's funny you should say, I did, let me go to that page. And, excuse me. So water, city, 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 water, okay, look at water distribution funded by CDD, but city is responsible for operation and maintenance, sanitary, city's responsible for oper, I mean, they're, they're funny about, there's certain things in here that I had noticed before. There's a, a public recreation improvements, which is offsite. I'm not sure what that means, but the city's responsible for that. They're as.
City's responsible for operation and maintenance.
Oh, and they're putting it up, but we're responsible for the operation and maintenance of some of these things. So that's.
Well, I wouldn't want them responsible for the water distribution or the sanitary system. And that's the city function.
Right.
And that's the city function.
Right. But, you know, the, the costs associated, I mean, the things, the maintenance and things break, that we're going to have to pick up the cost for, for maintaining and operating that. There's costs involved. I mean, here's my question to you. And, and Mr. Mayor, you actually alluded to this. And this is the first one. We don't know, I'm asking, I know you're going to try to chop my head off, but I, I want to ask, I think it might be prudent to, to, you know, put this off to conference. We could get a presentation.
This is just the first reading anymore.
I know. But I'd still be, even before that, I'd just get a, so we could, we could discuss to see what it's about and get a better feel for, for, for CDDs in general. And, and, no, I just don't have that comfort. And I, I don't think.
All right.
That's my thought.
Okay.
My question, if you could just verify for me, this would be the first CDD for Fort Lauderdale. Is that what I heard?
Just for Fort Lauderdale.
For Fort Lauderdale.
Just for Fort Lauderdale. And really, the basis is, you know, Fort Lauderdale, unlike some other cities that are in Broward County, is really built out. You're just seeing now in City of Miami with redevelopment and in succeeding for creating the CDD to create that funding mechanism and taking that burden of some of those public improvements off of the City of Miami and also Miami-Dade County. And so the City of Miami and Miami-Dade County that own certain properties they're in and normally would be the ones to put in those public improvements, finance them, and maintain some of them too, such as lighting, sidewalks, even roadways. Instead of that, we're creating CDDs in those areas, and the CDD is the one that is funding and through an interlocal agreement with the City of Miami and Miami-Dade County, the CDD is the one that's going to continue to maintain those improvements. As long as they're public improvements, the CDD can fund them and can also maintain them.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
So the only thing I would add to that is, I dealt with a lot of CDDs with the larger developments that you see in North Florida where you've got, you know, 500, 1,000 home developments going in. And typically, the first thing that they do is they set up a CDD to come in and do all the infrastructure for roads, stormwater, water sewer, and everything else. And then that becomes the obligation then of all the homeowners, and they all participate in the CDD. The only wrinkle that I've ever seen as a concern, Commissioner Sturman, is some of these CDDs have issued bonds, kept up with the necessary amount of funding to pay the bonds. I don't think that's a concern we're going to have here because if you look at the people that are going to be buying into these residences, the CDD is going to be probably the least important item on their budget at any given time. It'll be a rounding error for them. They'll spend more on, you know, Dom Perignon than they're going to spend on the CDD fee, so in that respect, I'm not too concerned about their ability to keep up on the improvements. Certainly, they're going to have a tremendous incentive to maintain this property in an absolute pristine condition.
Okay. Any further comments? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kenny Tate, you've asked to speak, but is he still here?
Yeah, just questions, he said.
Just questions, Jimmy Tate, questions, okay. Well, does someone want to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Okay. Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, establishing a name in the Bahia Mar Community Development District, making certain findings regarding the district, describing the external boundaries of the district, naming the five persons designated to be the initial members of the Board of Supervisors, providing consent for the exercise of certain powers, providing for conflict, severability, and effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
No.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OFR Two is approved on first reading. And Commissioner Sturman, as you might continue to want to get a better feel for this concept, you know, if, I'm sure the city manager and the city attorney will make themselves available to you so that you and any of your constituents can certainly understand the process going forward.
Well, going, just to make a comment, going forward, I mean, as I get more info, now, we have actually more than two weeks to, how many, we have four weeks, or when's the next reading of this going to come up?
Two weeks.
December 5th.
What?
December 5th.
December 5th. So it's not two weeks, it's four weeks.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so we do have, I mean, we have some time. It's not out of the question that I'm looking to, it might actually be worthwhile. I do want to look at a comfort level because I don't know anything about it, but as I learn more-
Sure.
-I do want to get a comfort level.
Okay.
And I have four weeks to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. All right, the last item on the agenda, OSR One, second reading. This is an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations Regarding Parking and Loading Zone Requirements, General Design of Parking Facilities to Clarify the Different Types of Residential Uses and Alphabetize the Uses in Table One, Parking and Loading Zone Requirements, and to Add Regulations Regarding Drive Isles for the Different Types of Single Family Dwellings, Dwellings That Include Two Units and Clusters. Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
No one has signed up to speak. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's Unified Land Development Regulations, specifically amending Section 47-20.2 of the ULDR entitled Parking and Loading Zone Requirements to Clarify the Different Types of Residential Uses and Alphabetize the Uses in Table One, Parking and Loading Zone Requirements, amending Section 47-20.5 of the ULDR entitled General Design of Parking Facilities to Add Regulations Regarding Drive Isles for the Different Types of Single Family Dwellings, Dwellings That Include Two Units and Clusters, Providing for Severability, Providing for Conflicts, and Providing for an Effective Date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and OSR One is now approved on second reading. So is there any further business of the city commission?
We have the walk-on.
Correct, we have the walk-on, sorry. This is approving a recommendation from the Citizens Committee, thank you for reminding me, I'm sorry, of recognition honoring our former mayor, Robert Dressler, as the 2022 Honored Founder. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, second.
Removed and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and congratulations, Rob, and thank you for all the wonderful things you've done for our city all these many, many years. Now, is there any further business of the commission? There being none, the meeting is concluded. I'd like to now begin the CRA board meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes, President.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalles?
Here. M1, motion approving the minutes for the October 3, 2023, Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. I think we just lost the vice mayor. Someone, been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman, not present. Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and that motion has been approved. M2, motion authorizing the reissuance of requests for proposals.
I believe that one was removed.
That's pulled, I'm sorry. That's been pulled. R1, this is a resolution waiving the maximum funding amount and approving a forgivable loan increase of $400,000 under the Property and Business Improvement Program to VNR Family Enterprises. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced, and no one signed up to, no one signed up to speak. Just want to make sure about that. Okay, no one signed up to speak. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency waiving the maximum funding amount under the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency's Property and Business Investment Improvement Program for VNR Family Enterprises Corp, approving an increase in the forgivable loan in the amount of $400,000, approving the first amendment to the Property and Business Investment Improvement Agreement, authorizing the executive director to execute all related instruments, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman, not present. Chair-
Wait, she's coming, she's coming. Yes or no on R1?
Oh, yes.
And Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and R1's approved. R2, we have a revised R2 resolution. Did you all receive a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, can I add to that, though? Because I was the one who was asking for the revision, and it left out one aspect. So I had brought to the attention of staff as well as to the applicant that I was uncomfortable with the forgivable loan being forgiven at CO. Typically, we have a five-year forgiveness period during which we, you know, we keep that loan in place, and they were amenable to that. The only other issue is typically it also is forgiven at the time of a refinance. And so the language that we have in here merely mentions the five-year timeframe, but it doesn't mention the refi. So if we could add that to it, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so are you introducing the resolution as amended?
Yes, introduced as amended.
Okay, so that includes the five-year time period within which, after which the loan would be forgivable, and if it's refinanced, what was it again?
It's forgivable upon refi of the construction loan.
Of the construction loan, okay.
If I may, Commissioner, Commissioner Herbst, I think Susan from the city manager's office pointed out that the refinance is typically done within one year after CO.
It's usually one, two years.
You're okay with that, right? Okay. All right, so the R2 has been introduced as a resolution approving the item subject to the amendments as articulated by Commissioner Herbst. Anyone else have any questions? There being none, no one has signed up to speak, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving a forgivable loan of $8 million and a non-forgivable loan of $2 million to Sunshine Shipyard LLC for the Arcadian Project under the Development Incentive Program, authorizing a lease of commercial space of real property located at 640 Northwest 7th Avenue to the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and R2 is now approved. Is there any further business of the Community Redevelopment Agency Board? There being none, that meeting is now concluded. We now can go back to the conference meeting. So Greg, do we want to pick up those last two items at another meeting, or do?
Yeah, they can wait. They're not time-sensitive.
Okay, so I guess we'll go to communications to the city commission. The first communication we have is from the Historic Preservation Board. This is a communication, I guess it was pretty controversial, it's passed three to two, that the property appraisers' office indicate on their website that a particular piece of property is in an architecturally significant zone. So I guess that, how do we want to respond to that? I'm not quite sure what that means. Is that like if you live in Sailboat Bend, it should say on your property appraisers' screen that your house is in Sailboat Bend, which is a historically significant area?
Well, over time, we have done some informational aspects to the property appraisers' website where we have at least been transparent in letting people know that a home is historically designated or in a historic district, because we have heard over the years how important that was, because people would always say, when they bought a property, they had no idea. So real estate agents weren't always letting them know the, you know, the significance of purchasing such a property. But, so I personally think this is more transparency. In addition to letting people know if a property is historic or in a historic district, I think it makes sense to let them know if it is located in an archaeologically significant zone.
Anyone else have any thoughts on that? I happen to agree with you because it's transparency that I think property buyers should be aware, because a lot of them do say, you know, oh gee, I never knew I was in Sailboat Bend, and that there were architectural restrictions, so-
Right.
All right, are we, we have a consensus on that?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any, currently, are there any requirements that are being shared with the homeowners? I know this would be added to the property appraisers-
The screen.
The screen. But overall, when they're purchasing the homes, are there anything, because it's a historic district, right?
Yeah, so, all right, so as a, I'm a title agent, so it would be a, it would be an exception on your title policy indicating that there is a, there's an ordinance indicating that that's in a historic district, but not everybody reads those, and not everybody understands that.
Okay.
And the title agents don't always disclose that. So maybe another opportunity to make the buyer aware would be at the property appraisers' So I'd be in favor of that. Okay.
And it might actually be more than just Sailboat Bend, correct, Chris?
Yes, so the archaeological significant zones include a good portion of Sailboat Bend, most of the barrier island, and a lot of the areas along our rivers. So those areas where prehistoric and historic development occurred in the area. If you do want to move forward with that, we just need to draft a letter from the city manager to the property appraisers' office asking for that information to be added to the record.
Prehistoric?
Yes.
We had mastodons there?
You know, you find all sorts of things.
Native Americans. Native Americans, whatnot.
Mayor, don't you remember when you were born, the major, the major, how different it was?
Thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
My memory doesn't go that far.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on to the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board. There's a motion made that was passed unanimously to request the city, there's a zoning issue going on in the central city. Commissioner Glassman, you want to bring us up to date? They want us to be, they want us to just move ahead with this zoning in progress rather than wait for the ordinance to be passed. What are your thoughts?
I'm in favor, but I think the, I think the Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board has been doing a really good job. A lot's been on the plate, a lot of it's been delayed. I do support that request. I'm trying to think, it did pass unanimously, so I'm fine with that. Chris, are there any, any consequences or ramifications to this?
Well, it would impact anybody coming in looking to redevelop or rezon under the current zoning code for the area. I think the impetus for this at the board was there's a development application received for a storage-type facility, I think a self-storage facility. So that application's been received, so, you know, zoning in progress wouldn't necessarily apply to that project, only those going forward. So we can either work with the city attorney to bring something back to you, or we can have it updated at a conference on the rezoning effort in totality and then see if that's something you want to pursue from that point. So I think either way, we can, we can work and bring something back to you.
Well, I know all of the zoning changes, this has been a lengthy process. I mean, this is years now, right?
Yep.
What do you see as the timeline to wrap this up with the rest of the phases of the rezoning?
Good question.
Well, I just, I just know how long this has been going.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Clarence to help out. I know we talked about a rezoning as well as a land use plan amendment, which that could take some time. The rezoning could be done a little bit more expeditiously, but we need to come to terms with the types of uses and the things that the area wants to see in that zoning code update.
Thanks, Chris. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, we somewhat anticipate that maybe during the second quarter of next year, that the second phase of the rezoning can be wrapped up, which is, you know, just the rezoning of that eastern portion. The third phase is the land use plan amendment, and we would look at entertaining that particular study at some other point in time, maybe during the second quarter or third quarter of next year.
Second or third quarter of 2024?
Yes.
Why does it take so long to make land use changes? I mean, does it just sit on someone's desk for six months? I mean-
No, no. I mean, all of the public meetings and trying to get everybody to agree, it's just a process.
Okay.
Well, I did, I had one question, because if you look at the minutes of October 9 of the Central City CRA Advisory Board, it does say that they could do this communication to us, and then we would discuss it, and then it said that the city attorney or interim city attorney would be able to opine on it. So are there any issues that we should consider, or is it just okay to move forward with what their request is in terms of consider the zoning in progress?
So I've actually never done the zoning in progress. I don't think we've done one here in the city, but I may be wrong.
We have, we have.[1732.36] We have.
For my time.
Uh, so zoning in progress is a, uh.
Could you, could you identify yourself?
Duane Spence Deputy City Attorney.
Been a while.
Wow.
Been a while.
Yeah.
I'm still here.
How soon, how soon they forget.
Right, still alive.
Uh, so zoning in progress is a legal and planning concept that allows, um, a municipality during the process of a rezoning to, uh, pause applications that are submitted during the time period that the active planning, um, process is going on or that the ordinance or regulation is being developed.
In the affected area.
So the, the issue is whether or not the actual development of the, the rezoning ordinances is active, the activity is actively going on, um, in order to declare that a zip is in progress.
And I think we know where we're headed with this. It's taking a long, long, long time and it will take a little longer, but I think, I think the CRA Board knows where it's headed and I think, I understand where they're headed, but I, I, I'm okay with this request.
Do you think you can manage to get this wrapped up by the end of your last term?
Well, I think it started under your term, actually.
Yeah, I know it did.
Okay, how'd that go?
Not well. I handed it over to you.
Well, we're getting close now. We're getting close.
So the only, the only concern would be with regards to the length of time, um, it would be considered a moratorium if it goes on for an extended period of time and we'd have to do something more formal and adopting.
We don't want that.
That versus.
We need to wrap this up.
Yeah, let's wrap it up.
So whatever pathway we need to take, we would appreciate that.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Um, so we're, so, okay, I guess we're now on to, um, Commissioner Reports. So Commissioners, uh, Herbst.
In the interest of trying to get out of here quickly, I will waive my report.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
I wasn't ready for that. Okay, um. Sharing my report, um, I'm gonna slimline it, I do have several things here, but just gonna hit on some of those, um, great highlights. On October 19th, um, my staff attended a family promise breakfast that was held in Deerfield Beach. Family Promise is currently housed in Palm Beach and was giving funds to expand down into Broward County, hopefully, um, coming further south soon. Their mission is to empower families and making their transition from homelessness to sustainable independence. Um, great conversations, great opportunity to, um, hear more about their mission. Um, it is their desire to move more into south, south of the county, um, including Fort Lauderdale. Also, on the 19th, attended the grade, Greater Fort Lauderdale Alliance Gala at Signature Grand. On the 20th, mm-mm, Community Health Think Tank, um, had an opportunity to have a conversation with, um, Gordon Weeks and, um, William Green, um, taking, um, having a conversation about how we could have, um, provide services to help transition for those individuals who are being discharged from jail or also being discharged from the hospital. Also had a conversation with, um, oh, let me go back. On October 21st, Carter Park Jam in the Park, another great, um, citywide event. The band on that night was Reaction Band and they were awesome. We had a great time. Again, always extending that invitation to the city overall. Also, on October the 23rd, had an opportunity to have a Stay Safe Halloween, um, conversation with some of the neighbors and some of the youth, um, at Donna's Caribbean Restaurant on Six Trunk Boulevard. On, um, October 24th, attended the A-hack meeting. Also, um, October 24th, in regard to the Florida Beach Bowl, had a conversation, um, with Dana Joseph regarding a 5K run that would be held at Carter Park on December 9th. Um, having a conversation where, um, having an opportunity to, um, share a healthy, um, Day Health Movement Day. This will be also an opportunity, um, for American Diabetes Association will be partnering with them. Um, I've been asked to be the grand marshal of the event and I have to let you all know, um, like I said, it's a 5K, so my husband and I, we've been getting up early, getting ready for this 5K.
Good for you.
Because I said to them, I may not be the first one to cross the finish line, but I will come across the finish line. So we're really excited about it. Um, also wanted to share, um, on the 25th, um, Fort Lauderdale International Boat Show ribbon, ribbon cutting. Had the pleasure of being with my colleagues and, um, um, Fort Lauderdale, visit Fort Lauderdale with, um, Ms. Ritter, she was there. Um, a lot of people were there while we, um, kicked off the boat show with the ribbon cutting. Also, um, on that very same day, um, with our initiative that, the grant that we received from the federal government regarding the Good Jobs Great Cities Academy, um, there was a meeting that was, um, coordinated and put together with, um, Zoe Saunders, um, with our contact in DC. We had stakeholders from all over our city that came in to help and give a, um, great conversation about ideas, how to move this academy forward. Some of those who were in attendance was Broward College, um, um, Pompano, the City of Pompano, City of, um, Lauderdale, um, OIC, there was a, a wide variety of, um, organizations that were present and that are very much interested in, um, being a part of the Great Jobs and Great Cities Initiative. Also on the 25th, the 25th was a busy day, oh my goodness. Um, that was the, um, the mayor's soiree. We had a, um, a beautiful, beautiful time there, enjoyed the Janka New Dancers, great, um, great, always a great. Yeah, they're always cool, they always set the, the tone for the party, so great choice. Um, also, um, on the 26th, had the opportunity with our city manager and also Daphne Sanville to have breakfast regarding, um, the International Boat Show with Suncoast from Australia, and they gave us a beautiful, um, presentation about their, um, boat show and then what they were bringing to ours. So that was, that was, that was an amazing opportunity. Um, also on the 26th, um, was the National Read Day for the county and, um, that was through the Children's Service Council. And I had scheduled to be there, but, you know, we had some conflicts, but, um, Amber Cabrera, she went in my stead and she got so much, um, recognition and applause, everyone really enjoyed her coming out to read the book. The name of the book this year was, um, With Love and, um, she came in character, she really, really, um, went in 100% and we're so grateful for her standing in for us and the principal was really excited for her presence as well. So thank you again, Amber, for standing in on my behalf. On the 27th, um, I had the privilege of having a tour of Port Everglades. I was greeted by Ellen Kennedy along with Glenn Wishour, um, Paige Buchanan and Joy Ozabi. Um, great day, I even, um, got to understand how the, the ships come in, how the containers are moved about and, um, I even got to sit in a chair and move the crane. So that was exciting. That was really exciting. Um, also, um, on October 28th, the 28th, we know was Make a Difference Day and, um, we were able, we being, um, myself and, uh, my staff member, um, Jamil, we traveled through our district with George from Neighborhood Support and we actually made seven stops that morning. Uh, we, our first stop was, um, at Providence Park regarding the Little Libraries Declaration and Breath Strokes for History. Um, great turnout there, they were getting ready to, um, paint the little libraries. So we were able to, um, thank them for being there. Also at River Garden Sweden Estates, they had a, a, um, park cleanup, they actually cleaned up their park and we went over and had a conversation with them. Stopped by Delivo Park for pedal, um, pedal with a purpose in the waterways and the shoreline cleanup, um, the new river that borders, um, Delivo Park. Also neighbors helping neighbors, we were able to landscape, uh, one of the homes of our neighbors in Melrose Park. Also followed by, um, neighbors helping neighbors at Westwood Heights Elementary. There was a mirror that was painted and some other, um, highlights to the, to the, um, hallways of Westwood Heights. Want to thank those neighbors who came out to support. Um, also, um, this was also the city's first time participating in the National Prostration Drug, um, Drug Buyback Day. Um, I was, um, I introduced this event, um, probably back in February and I was really excited that, um, Neighborhood Support, they remembered my request and when the opportunity came again, um, they did jump on board and we were able to do, um, uh, well, well, I shouldn't say do, were able to partner with Broward Health Point, uh, William Green and we were at the, um, Cora, help me with that name because I, I know the, um, clinic for years, that's the Seventh Avenue Clinic. The new name is Cora.
I don't know.
It has a new name, a newer name, but that particular facility right on Seventh Avenue and, um, between Fourth and, and Third Street. So we were there, great turnout, um, many neighbors came out turning in their old prescriptions and, um, it was a great day. Also, um.
Cora Brunion.
There we go, thank you.
Family Health Center.
Yes, thank you. Um, we were able to do a tour with, um, Expecting Relief, this is a nonprofit, um, a group that is actually, um, housed in New York, but they come back to Florida once a month, actually Fort Lauderdale, to provide food, baby food, baby diapers and items to, um, neighbors in our community. And they also have a relationship with Hope South Florida and they usually do it there near Parkmont, amazing group. Um, also I wanted to share, um, I'm sorry, okay, one more thing. This is a, um, this is something I would like for us as a city to, um, partner with annually in the city of Fort Lauderdale in conjunctions with the YMCA. Um, there is a scholarship fair that comes to our city, um, this year or in 2024, the date is January 23rd and 24th. And the opportunity is through a, um, organization that is named Infinite Scholarship and it is a fair, it is not a college fair. The colleges come ready to give scholarships to those deserving students. So the students will come with their portfolios, with their resumes, SAT scores, everything packed and they basically give it to the admitting officer, they have a grading sheet and students are in position to walk away with opportunity and an offer to different colleges. Usually there's anywhere from 20 to 30 colleges onsite, um, in-state, out-of-state, um, even, um, the Virgin Islands have been there, Puerto Rico, and, um, I would like for us as a city to join with this initiative to be able to, um, help get this information out more and get our students, um, who are seeking to go to college and take advantage of this opportunity. And what I love about this particular program, um, there's no, um, application free and then they can go to multiple, um, colleges, admitting officers throughout the day. We have had, um, young people who walked away with six different colleges offers in their hand. And the only thing they had to do was go home and make the decision. And, and most of them, um, received full rides. So this is a great opportunity and I think this would be, um, a great opportunity for we, the city of Fort Lauderdale to expand an opportunity for all of our youth to know that there is a possibility and an additional way to go to college, but does not include student loans. Okay? So I am asking that and, and city manager, we can talk more about that as well. And then my last ask, um, is regarding, um, the maintenance schedule for the, um, pressure cleaning of the sidewalks on Six Trunk Boulevard. Because I've, um, noticing that they haven't been, um, cleaned, um, recently and then I'm, what I am also seeing that there's like maybe a half a block that's pressure cleaned and then they, it'll go further and then another part of the block is cleaned. So if we could get, um, the maintenance schedule so we can know when it is and get a continuous report on that being taken care of.
Will do, we will get that.
Okay, all right. Thank you for letting me use your time, John.
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor. So Vice Mayor, how's that part-time job going?
Yeah.
Right?
Exactly, exactly.
Exactly, exactly. We talked about that at your soiree, Mayor. So I, listening to that report, you know that it's not a part-time job. Not at all. Whoever told you that was not telling the truth. Um, thank you, Mayor. Wednesday, October 18th, Flagler Village Civic Association. Uh, on the 19th, Lakewood Civic Association, excellent meeting. And thank you to staff for always doing such a great job at these neighborhood association meetings. Uh, we have many in District Two, very active associations. Uh, Tuesday, October 24th, Mayor, I joined you, we were at the Terraces, uh, welcoming them to the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, and then also after that, uh, Venice Magazine had their, uh, Make a Splash Party uh, in Sunrise Key to welcome the, um, boat show. Uh, Wednesday, October 25th, as the Vice Mayor said, very busy day, uh, the ribbon cutting on top of the La Solas rooftop, uh, on top of the garage, rather, at the rooftop of the garage on La Solas, uh, that was a great event with so many stakeholders, so many people from the community. Uh, following that, um, the boat show does an amazing job every year with their global business luncheon, incredible speakers that talk about just the entrepreneurship of these young folks is incredible to me. There's always so much to learn and these people are so impressive. Uh, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, that evening was the mayor's soiree at the Super Yacht Village, so well-attended, a great energy, uh, throughout the evening. Um, Thursday, October 26th, I, I did spend a few days at the boat show and did some proclamations, um, to Hout Living, um, to McAllen, uh, another good turnout, uh, for those folks. A lot of people don't realize that many of these businesses that are part of our boat show, um, they give back a tremendous amount to the community and it's really nice when we can recommend, uh, when we can recognize that, uh, with proclamations and thank them uh, for what they do with the give back. Uh, Friday, November 3rd, um, joined the mayor, Commissioner Thurman at the Di Vali Festival at the La Solas Oceanside Park. Uh, this was the second year of the Di Vali Festival, uh, terrific, terrific festival, um, basically recognizing all of the accomplishments and the celebration, um, of our Hindu-American community, uh, in Fort Lauderdale. Um, we're gonna start a bunch of light-ups coming Thursday evening. We have Light Up Lauderdale in Esplanade Park, uh, that will be the first of many. Then also before our next commission meeting on Friday, November 10th, this Friday, we have Light Up the Beach in La Solas Oceanside Park. Um, Saturday, November 11th, I'll be attending the Equality Florida Broward Gala at the Western on the beach. Uh, that is always a tremendously attended, um, gala, um, dealing with, uh, a lot of advocacy issues, um, needed more now than ever in terms of the LGBTQ community, uh, in our state of Florida. November 13th, a lot of buzz about the rink opening in Wonderland in La Solas Oceanside Park. Uh, while many of us await the ice rink in Holiday Park to open when the Panthers do that facility, uh, you don't have to wait till quite then because on November 13th, and you will see a sneak preview of that this Friday when we have the Light Up the Beach. Uh, but the rink will open officially on November 13th where people can turn in their sandals for skates. I think that's the motto. Uh, I think this is gonna be a very popular, popular venue, uh, for those that like to ice skate. Um, Monday, November 13th, uh, we have a very important Himishy Open House at the Marine Industries Building. Um, there'd been ongoing discussions for a few years now about how do we reactivate, uh, and bring back Himishy Village the way people remember it, um, so that it's not just a, uh, two o'clock till four o'clock venue. Uh, we have to make this street again, uh, activated during the day, we have to bring all of the stakeholders together, this is very important, we talked about it at our goal-setting workshop this past January. So I'll be happy to be a part of that open house where all of the stakeholders will be coming to discuss how do we bring back, uh, Himishy Street the way we really want to see it. Uh, next week also, Wednesday, November 15th, Mayor, this was, I guess, something that we never thought would have such a significance, but you are hosting for mayors across the country, a summit, uh, dealing with antisemitism, opening at the W Hotel on the beach, uh, with workshops all day on Thursday, the 16th, and then a closing dinner, um, at the Hard Rock.
And by the way, everybody on the commission is invited to attend, there's the opening, opening. And by the way, everybody on the commission is invited to attend, there's the opening dinner on the 15th, which is at the W, like you said.
Is that November?
Yes, next week, next Wednesday.
And then during the day, there are panel discussions, individual speeches by mayors from North America, actually, not just the United States. And I understand Mayor New York is supposed to be attending as well. And then that evening will be a concluding ceremonial banquet at the Hard Rock Casino, which is being sponsored and funded, underwritten completely by the Hard Rock Casino. So we're very blessed to have them as someone in our community. But if you want to go, just, I'll give you the information on how to make a reservation there so that you'll be able to attend.
Mayor, I just would like to say, unfortunately, I'll be out of town for the National League of Cities, so that's the only reason why I won't be there.
Yeah, I understand. That was the only, this wasn't the most ideal week because of that, but that was the only time they could do it, the Combat Antisemitism Movement Organization.
So Wednesday, the 15th?
At night at the W.
Right, and then the 16th.
Seminars on the 16th at the W, the next day, and then the closing dinner at the Hard Rock.
Same day?
No, yes, the 16th.
The 16th, yeah.
Begins the 15th, ends the 16th at night. And again, I don't think when this was scheduled, we actually knew the relevance of this conference. This was scheduled way before what we're seeing now throughout our country and actually the world.
Well, I mean antisemitism existed before October 7th.
Oh, without a doubt.
And so this is not really a commentary on Middle East politics, this is antisemitism in America and that's really the focus of this conference.
Correct, but I think there is an extra added dimension to this now because of the events and what has transpired since then.
Absolutely.
I think there is another, just the mere fact that the data shows us that within the timeframe of October 7th till now, as opposed to a year ago, antisemitic incidents have increased by 400% in our country, that says a lot. The Jewish population of the United States is roughly 2%, 2% of the entire population, but the religious hate crimes represent 60% when dealing with hate crimes against Jewish folks. So these statistics are troubling and it just adds, as I said, another dimension. On Friday, November 17th, we will see the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber of Commerce Salute to Business Dinner honoring Kelly Shanley, who will also, by the way, on the 15th, be honored by the History Makers also because, again, Kelly will be leaving the Broward Center, I believe, in March. Also on Friday, November 17th, the Nirmie Isles Holiday Party, I think that's the earliest one in District Two, that is the first one, again, on November 17th. Saturday, November 18th, as we heard tonight during the proclamations, we will have the Eighth Annual Turkey Giveaway at Sanctuary Church, 1400 North Federal Highway. Just two things that I'd like to discuss under comments, this came up, number one, at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, but City Manager, I'm hearing more and more about groups, not friendly groups, of bicycle riders with at least 15 to 20 kids, really menacing up and down A1A and also La Solas where they are actually crashing into grills of cars, menacingly close to cars, side-swiping them, laughing all the way. Last Saturday night at 6 o'clock, especially by Beach Place, so maybe this is a discussion we can have with our new Chief of Police to make sure that we really put a stop to this, because I've had several reports of this and, again, last night, that was mentioned on my pre-agenda, we need to nip that right in the bud. And then lastly, I'm going to ask the City Clerk to pass to each of you, I brought this up before at a conference, I have not discussed it since because of the late hour of the last few meetings. And then when I did bring this up about things that have been reported to me at the Charter Revision Board, I know that some of my colleagues said they really wanted to see full context of what I'm talking about. So I do have a thumb drive for each of you so that at your own time, you can see this meeting in particular and also view it and I've also given you transcripts so you can read it. But I would actually like to show some of this now. Originally, I thought that I could save this for the 21st of November because we did have a discussion requesting a joint meeting with the Charter Revision Board, we thought we were setting November 21st, but I'm hearing now that that's not happening. So that's why I want to do this now because even though the minutes of that meeting when I first brought this up said, let's schedule a joint meeting, that is not happening. So I'd like to talk about that now. If we could maybe just show this little three-minute clip, I'm not going to show you this entire meeting, but I do want to show you some highlights that, again, this is not even the time that I mentioned it the last time, this continues to happen at each of these charter revision meetings and I'm having difficulty with the subject matter and if we could maybe show that clip.
Are we going to have to entertain a motion to extend the time of the meeting, Mr. Mayor?
I hope not. Well, I'll be done in four minutes, my entire report, but if we could show that, Thank you.
We needed to look at the various forms of government to make sure that the public understands the various forms of government because the beliefs operation is not really following the charter. Again, it's been suggested from the mayor to the manager and we've definitely seen a major difference in qualifications of managers from the past versus what we have today and therefore it's projected in the quality of the work product we see at the end of the day.
Can we just stop that right there? I just want to repeat those words. From the mayor to the manager, we've definitely seen a major difference in qualifications of managers from the past versus what we have today and therefore it's projected in the quality of the work product we see at the end of the day. Let's continue.
Our charter is very, very clear on the criteria. So if it's not being abided by, which we know it's not being abided by, most of our economic development really grew in our financial strength as the city grew with the mayor and professional manager form of government versus just a commissioned mayor. And that particular mayor always was very inclusive of his colleagues on everything that he did. So it comes back to the professionalism of how you follow and how you adopt the language of the charters that were not changes that should have been done by ordinance. So that's really what you're pointing out there is that we're trying to fix what was broken with the last elections because of the action of the last commission who voted on ordinances that really should not have been done by ordinance. Very specific within the charter too as to what the mayor can or can't do. Unfortunately, certain people haven't really read the charter and will say at a conference agenda, well, that's because the charter says the mayor can do that, but that is not what the charter says. And it's a very frustrating point knowing we talked about based on what we went through with the issues seating the commission and the clarity because of the ill-behaved of those that were there, blocking the elected people from being seated. So back then we started talking about, well, what form? Because they were acting one form, which was inconsistent with the charter and blocking us from having a commission moving forward.
Thank you. Again, I want to reiterate that I'm not finding this appropriate behavior of a member of an advisory board to bash a commission, whether it be a current commission, former commission, to bash a city manager, to talk about a city manager or a mayor's qualifications and the quality of work that comes out of this commission. This is not what the Charter Revision Board should be doing. And you heard those words, I'm not going to repeat all these words, I've given you the transcript of this clip that I just showed. However, I will tell you that when you go through the rest of the video, if you choose to do that, you will see extended conversations regarding the commission blocking the current commission from being seated. These are all issues that I think are very much an opinion that I do not share. And yet again, I don't think that it really should be opined as such at a charter revision board. There are ways to deal with the charter. We gave a list of items, the City Attorney's Office gave a list of items of what we like to see happen, how we bring our charter in conformance with state statutes. There are ways to do that without criticizing the current commission, former commission. As I said the last time, I have served on many, many city and county boards and I've observed many, many city and county boards. I have never, ever seen a board member, whether it's a board member, whether it's a chair of a board, act like this, speak like this and behave like this. And you will read in much more detail about how these are then talked about, I mean, professional managers, who's professional, unlike professional managers, the language just goes on and on, it goes into an entire description of what happened during the flooding in April and the criticism of the city based on what happened in April. I know that the president of the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, which I've given you what she said, talked about some of these things, took a little bit of exception, what was said here, even asked more questions and then the response being that we're just ignoring our charter. And again, these are opinions and I don't know if we're comfortable with this. Again, to say that we are constantly acting inconsistently with the state, inconsistently with the county, even saying that the way we did our redistricting for the census was holding up the county, I don't remember ever hearing that from the county. I know that at one point in this video that I've sent you and I've given you the transcript, our City Attorney's Office was asking about, were we behaving inconsistently with the state law? And the City Attorney's Office said, no, we were not. And then there was a disagreement about that. And then there even were discussions of the residency of the current city manager brought up by the chair of the board, exception taken by that by other members that were in attendance that night. But again, I'm just finding it difficult to listen to this when people keep, again, I don't watch these meetings, but when people keep telling me about them, I have to start to look at them because I'm thinking, what's going on? I'm disappointed that we're not meeting with this board on November 21st, which this is what I would have actually asked or shown these videos. But again, at these charter revision board meetings, it's consistently coming up, is it appropriate and should we discuss paid lobbyists serving on city advisory boards? And then I have asked the City Attorney's Office and I'm still hoping to have that discussion about what other cities do in terms of a code of conduct. There is a code of conduct, there are ways that you should behave on an advisory board to the city commission and what language is appropriate. And I know that I've heard this in the past, that free speech is free speech, but that's true, but then free speech, speech has consequences. I'm going to end it right there, Mayor, but again, I find it troubling and I wanted you all because I know the last time people said, we need to see the context. So you all have now the full meeting of this date, which was October 5th, there was a meeting subsequent to this also where these same items were discussed again, they're discussed at every single meeting. But you now have the full October 5th Charter Revision Board meeting, transcript and also video. Thank you, Mayor, I'm finished.
All right, I think that.
Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, I'm talking, hold on a second. I think that your point with regard to wanting a joint conference meeting with the Charter Review Board is imperative, I agree with you. If there are any questions or concerns that we have with regard to interpretations or performance on the board, that would be the time to do it and give everyone, instead of talking around one another or outside of each other's, you know, if the charter, if members of the Charter Revision Board had issues, they should bring them to the commission and not, and if there are comments about me in particular, that criticism about me, I wish those people would come to me and talk to me directly rather than talking behind my back. So this is the first I've heard of this, so I don't appreciate knowing this, so, but I think that it's unfortunate that we had to suspend the, or postpone the Charter Revision Joint Meeting because it is important, but I think that the conversation regarding the tunnel takes a little bit of a priority at this point. So, okay, Commissioner Sterman, you want to say something?
Do we need to extend?
Yeah, so I need a motion to extend.
I'll be quick, how about you?
I have a few things to say.
Okay, we'll extend.
All right, it's to 10:30?
10:15, whatever. I mean, I could, I could.
All right, you're quick, then I'll be done by 10:15. Okay, motion out for 10:15, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trent Tals?
Yes.
Continue, Commissioner Sterman. Okay, three things, I told you to be quick. First one is, we've had a series of town hall meetings, we've had one for infrastructure, we had one for budget, we had one for traffic. The next one, I think, is going to be really critical. Mr. City Manager, when is we slated to have our goal-setting session?
That is on January...
The third week of January, is it?
18th.
Is it the 18th?
At 9:30.
Okay, so our next.
I'm sorry, 9.
What was that?
It's at 9 on January 18th, Thursday.
9 a.m., I hope, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. You never know with us over here. So we keep an eye out, we are going to be sending out announcements, we're going to be sending out bulletins for the town hall, for goal-setting, for everybody in District Four, this is critical. I am going to need your feedback, this is going to determine what we do for the next year, for everything from budget to priorities of the city, so keep an eye out, that's number one. Number two, I think it might not be a bad idea, Mr. City Manager and Mr. City Attorney, if we had a presentation at some point about the bonds, you know, we keep going bond this, bond that, I mean, how much that we have out in bonds, what our capacity is and how much, what our debt and financing with the city as a whole, I think that might be useful. I'll ask my colleagues, you know, this is a conference, so does anybody think that's...
Makes sense.
Okay. And the last thing, okay, this, you're going to be up in a minute, Mr. Mayor. I've gone to Bright Line up to Orlando, back and forth once, I'm going to be going again this weekend to Catherine, my daughter's Father Day's weekend at UCF, and then a third time up and back to Thanksgiving. A great experience, will never take a car again and, Mr. Mayor, at some point, I am looking forward to taking a tunnel to go, to get there. So if we can get a tunnel, I will be the first one to go through a tunnel on a train going up to Fort Lauderdale and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. A lot of the activities that I attended, a lot of you have already spoken about, but there are a few that I just want to point out. I was able to attend on October 19th, a White House Conference on Building a Better Florida. It was essentially a collection of some mayors, of community leaders that were invited to attend this three-hour meeting in which the White House was basically telling people how much money they've given to the state of Florida through the infrastructure bill, which gave us an opportunity to talk to them about our other needs that we have. So it was a good opportunity to have a face-to-face meeting with White House officials. On the 21st, I attended the Imperial Points Fall Harvest Festival, it was a great Saturday morning, a lot of people from the neighborhood were there. And that evening, I attended the carnival at St. Jude's Canaanaya Catholic Church in South Middle River. This is a very interesting church because it seems that the Apostle Thomas evangelized as far east as India and there is a colony of Christian Catholics in India, some of whom now live in Fort Lauderdale. And they have established this Catholic Church in South Middle River, which they bought in 2015, so I didn't even know it as a commissioner. And I attended their performances and it was just a great, it was just a wonderful feeling to be able to be included in their festival. They were celebrating their patron saint, which is Saint... They were celebrating their patron saint, which is Saint Jude. And so it was really a great opportunity to connect with a culture and a group that I didn't even know existed before. A tribute to the diversity of the city of Fort Lauderdale. I was at the Nova Southeastern University on October 22nd, it was a Sunday, in which I gave welcoming remarks at the Levon Center to the Ocean Exchange Conference, which essentially was a lot of young kids talking about how to preserve our environment and to improve technology in order to achieve those goals. It's a great opportunity to meet with those young kids. I'm trying to go through some of these things. I want to thank the Boat Show, the Marine Industries, all the sponsors, especially the, who was the main sponsor? I'm getting tired.
You mean Informa?
I'll think of it in a second. All the sponsors who underwrote the opening reception, the mayor's reception for the Boat Show. The reason why that is important is because it showed a community effort and appreciation for this international event that we have going in our city. It's a singular and unique event that is, that is special to our community, not just because of all the big boats that are there, but it provides over 8,000 jobs to the community and as much as $1.8 billion worth of economic impact, more than double the economic impact as one would compare to the Super Bowl down in Miami. So it's really, really an important opportunity for us to continue to participate. There were events all week long, different private homes were sponsoring parties, and companies were all, all being a part of it. I even ran into the vice mayor at the October 27th Concorde's Car Show. That was really cool, too, right? That was another nice event. And then you mentioned the Gold Coast Marine Industry Breakfast. You know, Gold Coast is our sister city in Australia, and someday I hope to be able to visit there. I know it's on the other side of the world, but, you know, somehow they make it here every single year. So, and really great people, and it was a great breakfast to attend. I also attended the GLBX Ally Awards Banquet, which was on November 2nd, and also this past Saturday, the Tarpon Rivers Fall Party in the park, very well-attended by many people in that, in that community. That evening, that same evening, we had the Day of the Dead Parade. Now, the Day of the Dead Parade was featured that next morning on CBS Sunday Morning as one of the best Dia de los Muertos celebrations in the entire country. Yes. And, and the council general from Miami was just absolutely overwhelmed by the turnout. There were thousands and thousands of people there, so it was really great. My hat is off to Jim Hammond for his perseverance despite the adversity that he suffered in the, and the April flood that we had here in our city, where a huge number of his puppets were destroyed. So again and again, Jim, thank you for making this event such an important event for our community. And that night, it was a busy day, I attended the, at Steve Savers' house on the Isles. He was having a fundraiser for the Winterfest. Again, another great opportunity for the community to come out and appreciate what Winterfest means to our city. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, I'm going to Harbordale Elementary, and I'm going to read to some kids. I hope I get all the words right. And it's Celebrity Readers' Day, so happy to do that.
Hope you won't have to say Dia de los Muertos.
Me, too. And that, and that same morning, and I invite everybody to participate at 10:30, we're having the official groundbreaking of the United States Courthouse. That'll be on Southeast Third Avenue. And, and I'll tell you, that, as Commissioner Herbst mentioned earlier today, that was a long time coming. And, and I'll tell you, it's, it's very, very important that the city retained a courthouse. There's some question as to whether or not they would even build one in Fort Lauderdale. They were thinking of just keeping the courthouses in Palm Beach County and Miami-Dade County and not building one in Fort Lauderdale. So thank you to all those who made that a success, especially Senator Nelson for being able to shepherd that process through the, through Congress, as well as Debbie Wasserman Schultz, who came in at the end and was able to secure the gap funding necessary in order to make that a reality. As Commissioner Herbst, Commissioner Glassman indicated, we have a bunch of light-up ceremonies for the, over the next 30 to 60 days. And I think it's a great opportunity for everyone in each neighborhood to come out and enjoy the, and celebrate the holiday season. Very important to me, of course, is the Combat Antisemitism Summit, which we're having next week. I just felt it was important, after I attended it last year, it was important to bring that to Fort Lauderdale. We have a burgeoning Jewish community here in Fort Lauderdale, and at the same time, the threat and the risk of antisemitism continues to pervade our communities, especially in, in Florida. And if we can convene and talk about best practices on how to defeat antisemitism, I feel it's a benefit for everybody, and that's why I hope we can all find a way to participate in some way. And as Commissioner Glassman also indicated, the Chambers Salute to Business Dinner at the Museum of Discovery and Science. It'd be a very, very great opportunity for all of us to honor Kelly Shanley, a great person. I can't believe he's leaving his post there, but I'm looking forward to meeting the new director, and hopefully will continue the excellent kind of programming that we have been always enjoying at the Brownard Center. So with that said, I have nothing further... Oh, wait, one other thing. Commissioner Herbst, have you been hearing complaints about the dance club?
I have been getting complaints about the dance club on an almost daily basis since I was sworn in.
Really? Okay. Because I got all these emails that we've been getting now, and-
It's, it's an intractable problem. This is one where I've worked very closely with Greg, with Pat Lynn, Assistant Chief Dana Swisher. We have, we have been working, Anthony Fajardo. So we have had code enforcement out there every single week, several times a week. We've had, our police department has been conducting, you know, various types of surveillance up there. We've got a variety of problems, some of which emanate from the nightclub. They've actually sat down with us, and they're working on putting in soundproofing and a number of other things to try and deal with. They really want to be a better neighbor in that area. We have a convenience store that unfortunately is less inclined to be a good neighbor. We've got the church that is conducting a homeless feeding and outreach program, and unfortunately, their clients are not leaving the area after they have received services from the church, so they're remaining in the area. Many of these clients are now engaged in drug dealing and prostitution in the area. So, yeah, we have just been overwhelmed in that area. Unfortunately, we can't provide the solutions that the residents on that street want. It's an unusual one where the residential neighborhood happens to back up to a commercial area, and so they would like us to shut down the club, but it's zoned for that. And, you know, we've tried to explain that to the residents, that, you know, unfortunately, you know, the area along Oakland Park Boulevard permits, permits that activity. And, you know, the fact that it's adjacent to a residential community is a challenge, but we can't just come in there and shut the nightclub down.
So have they been able to mitigate the noise emanating from the dance club? Is that, is that a problem still?
I'll let, I'll let Greg jump in a minute, but again, code enforcement has been out there measuring constantly, and we've had a couple of significant code enforcement violations, one, I believe, of 15,000, the other of 17,000. But they have made strenuous efforts. One of the problems, as you're aware, Mayor, in the years that we've dealt with this in the city, is that bass sound, while it may not trigger the noise levels-
The decibel level.
The decibel level can still be, you know, intrusive into, into the adjacent homeowner. So they're feeling the bass, but it doesn't, it doesn't rise to a level that violates our noise ordinance.
I see.
So these are some of the issues. I'll let Greg speak to what we've been doing as well.
All right. Before you speak, Greg, so I can conclude my remarks, I would be remiss if I did not finally talk about the city picnic, the city employee picnic, which is at Mills Pond Park on November 18th. I hope everybody from the commission and the community can join us. Looking forward to pouring beer at 10:00 in the morning.
It's for employees.
Yeah. And, and finally, Scott Van Lou. Scott has been an engineering inspector in DSD for 38 years and 8 months.
Wow.
And he's now, he will be retiring November 3rd. Oh, he's already retired. So I just want to say congratulations, Scott. Thank you for your service to our community, and hopefully you enjoy your retirement. It's all yours, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, just wanted to add that, yes, code inspectors go there twice a night at times. This Monday, I was going to pair up with them, but the nightclub was closed, so I got dressed up for nothing.
It was closed?
Yeah.
Oh, the night you went, okay.
I was going to go. Nevertheless, you know, I spoke to Chief Schultz this morning, and he has a strategy in place, that he's going to deploy certain technologies there that are going to help improve that area. We're looking forward to report upgrades and updates on that. Also wanted to share that, talking about Chief Schultz, we're very excited, and we're having coffee with the chief and inviting all the community to our new temporary PD headquarters, that's at 1515 Cypress Creek Road, November 14th, Tuesday, from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. We're going to have coffee, doughnuts. We invite everyone to come and just meet and greet with the chief and the staff. Also wanted to invite everyone to the Uptown 5K. It's going to be on Saturday, November 18th, at FXC. Registration is free. And last, just want to say, that's the 18th, so the 18th is going to be a busy day. It's going to be very early in the morning, I think it's at 7:30 AM. And I can share those details, those details are on our Facebook page, but I'll make sure you all get those invites. And last, we are looking forward to helping the Galt, District Commissioner John Herbst Sasse, that he was, he was approached by certain businesses that they haven't been doing well in the past year. So what we're doing is to light up the Galt. We're going to pair up with Public Affairs and position our entertainment and also the event itself into the areas where we do the pre-Labor Day event, so that we can promote further the businesses. And we look forward to creating a campaign to help drive businesses to the Galt and the North End and see how, you know, bring awareness of, of everyone to, to, you know, look, make part of that, those business communities. And I will be out of the office this Friday. Anthony Fajardo will be acting on my behalf on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. I want to invite everybody on Saturday to attend the ceremony with the local veterans for the Sandy Nenninger statue, and to commemorate, and to, and to thank our veterans on that morning. So if you are able to come, please, please join me. And having said that, meeting is concluded.